I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'm gonna turn it to Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you.
The opening part.
Thank you. Para accesar la traduccion, oprima el boton del globo. In order to access translation, push the button that looks like the globe at the bottom of the screen. Back to you, President Christian.
Thank you. In order to access translation, push the button that looks like the globe at the bottom of the screen. Good evening, I am calling the meeting January 13th to order. This is a special meeting of the West Country Costa School Board. At this time, we will have the pledge allegiance that will be done by trustee Reckler. Let's stand. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To like to thank trustee Reckler for the pledge allegiance. And at this time, we will have the land acknowledgement that will be done by trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Christian. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Tchutchenyo, Moakma, Parkin, Taloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Alright, thank you. And now we will proceed on, now we are now we are moving on to A4. Welcome, the procedures, these are the welcome procedures. Once again, welcome to tonight's special meeting. We have one discussion topic tonight. COVID-19 response contingency plan. In just a few minutes, this meeting will provide public comment and opportunity on the agenda and and the items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn Middle School and you wish to make a public comment, you would need to fill out and submit an orange request form to address the board to indicate your desire to speak on the agenda item and hand it in to staff, to a staff member. If participating in Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app by pressing star nine and assessing the meeting by phone. There is no yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. If you are attending the Zoom, please raise your Zoom icon now, if you are in the audience here at DeJohn, please finish up your orange request form and hand them in. To access tr- translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation serves are available in the Zoom by clicking on the phone, on the globe can but and and on the screen. Due to the Brown app, the board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and to do usually is not usually required to are not permitted if it's not in the Brown. Now, we are moving to A5 roll call of board members, Dr. Hertz. May I please have the roll call?
Absolutely, sir. President Christian.
President.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Phillips. Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Trustee Co.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Trahillo.
Hello, I'm present.
All members, all trustees are accounted for with the exception of trustee Phillips at this time.
Thank you. Now, we are moving on to A6 to public comment. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you for, thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation as we experiment with the new ways to conduct the people's business while allowing for maximum participation and adhering to our values of respect and safety for the community. And so now we'll go into public comment. We will start with the orange. Before I get started, after we, if we have a lot of speakers, after we, the speakers, and if I see we have a large number, we will still in public comment just which public comment is an hour, so we are standing to 30 minutes, an hour and 30 minutes. If we have a lot of speakers. And now we'll go to public comment, we will start with the first one from the audience on the orange card. Is Gabriel? Gabriel. Michaela. Thank you.
I apologize, Ms. Michalati, if you could hold on one moment, you're not being heard on the Zoom. Just one second, sorry for stopping you. Thank you, if you wouldn't mind starting again, I apologize for stopping you.
No worries, alright. So, I teach at Verde Elementary and out of only six students in my class who were tested yesterday, three came up positive, this is in addition to another student who tested positive at home. Fifty percent positivity rate is a clear marker, we need more testing. Until January 24th, I will only have eight of my 24 students in class with me. I only had five show up today, please explain how this is good for my students. Earlier this week, I listened to Dr. Hurst in a meeting with 300 other educators. He repeatedly told us the reason various safety measures we are promised aren't happening is due to staffing shortages across the district. Yet this board continues to treat the staff who have remained despite all the challenges with disrespect. I put blood, sweat and tears into building relationships with my students and their families. I work hard to create a culture of learning, collaboration and mutual respect, and I am proud of the way they work together. Yet you sit up here suggesting we collapse classes or involuntarily reassign teachers away from the communities we have built. How does this best serve our students and their needs? Tearing students away from their teachers they know and love would only pile on to the past few years of loss. Other teachers and I are trying to provide stability in the chaos of the world and yet find ourselves with no direction or answers and therefore contributing to the chaos our students are experiencing. Please stop talking about educators as people only come for paycheck and don't care about their students. Next time before you say you will not tolerate teachers doing what they need to protect themselves in the communities we spend every day with. And ask yourself, how much more mistreatment and disrespect your employees will tolerate before you are left with greater staff shortages than you are already experiencing? You've pushed teachers who have stuck with this district through many trials to the breaking point with this rhetoric. I know more than a few who have begun job hunting as of Tuesday. I hope as leaders of this district, you will stop and think about whether you are actually placing students at the center of your decisions or politics. Please start valuing your main, hardworking staff and create such structure for the students instead of further chaos. Thank you.
The next speaker that we have is Sheila Swift.
Now, if you, oh, there you go, we can hear you now.
Thank you, President Christian and trustees. I'm here tonight to reiterate what I've said in all the meetings I've been to up until today, and that is that I'm asking that you reconsider the vaccine mandate and the deadline of February 18th and postpone it indefinitely. I'm not anti-vax at all, I am pro-choice. I, I know that where there is risk, there must be consent. And I'm asking for families, parents to make that choice for their children, not the school district. I know that you're up against some, some so many challenges and I, I wish that I could offer my support, but I need to put my child first and I will pull him from the school district if the mandate stands. Thank you.
Alright, that, alright, now we will move to public comment that's in the Zoom app.
Our first public comment, our first public speaker on Zoom is Luis Chacon. If you can please unmute yourself.
Hi, can y'all hear me? Yeah. Good evening, Council, my name is Luis Chacon, I'm a Richmond High School teacher, alumni and community member. I'm gonna spare you the details of the current terrible and unsafe situation at our schools. I'm sure you'll, you've heard enough about that, and if you haven't, I'm sure if you check your email, you'll find plenty of details around that. I will say that Richmond and the greater community has a proud history of taking care of ourselves by any means, and this is no different. We're facing unsafe and unhealthy conditions. Students and teachers and families are organizing for our own health and safety. The superintendent and the board is either gonna listen to us and build with us now or get left behind, even if it won't be tolerated. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Peters. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. I just wanted to talk about how the community is still waiting for an explanation of why the board chose to ignore their own bylaws 9100 and not elect trustee Jimmy List Smith Folds to president of the board. Even when y'all had the lawyers there at the meeting with you, you didn't give us an explanation. It is our duty, the community, to hold elected officials accountable, and that is what I'm doing now, and I implore everyone listening to do the same. Tell us why you, you pick and choose which bylaws and which rules you're gonna follow. This type of behavior from trustee Mr. Phillips and Leslie Reckler and O3 Christian is disappointing and continues to foster distrust from our, from your constituents. It is very, it's even more disappointing that, and a little suspicious that Mr. Phillips orchestrated this and this happened to him in 2018 when he was clerk. He was quoted saying that he was embarrassed by it and I don't understand why he then would be president and allow this to happen to the person who was clerk under him two years later. We should be doing better year after year, not the same nonsense. The public deserves answers. Lastly, as y'all create these COVID protocols and plans for central office and staff and those who are in the classrooms, are you even asking them their opinions on how to actually implement some of these things? When I'm on Nextdoor app, hearing the community complaints about logistics and implementing of different things, I'm thinking to myself, oh, I knew that wasn't gonna work, because I'm very much aware of the school community, the school and the community for which I live in, the logistics of how schools work. I think you guys should be talking to office staff, the people on the ground, the people who are dealing with students and operating the schools day to day and have them tell you the truth of what's happening and how you can actually implement some of this stuff. I wanna encourage you to talk to the district staff, the central office staff that were principals or last year or in the last two years, they know how these schools work. Are y'all talking to them as you're creating these plans? Because some of this stuff is really backwards, like the plan that is gonna be presented today, I already see so many holes in it that it really comes across as you guys just doing something to say that you're doing something. I was at the meeting on Monday with a bunch of, with 300 teachers. They're giving you suggestions, they're giving you some ideas, please listen to them, they know what they're talking about. They're the boots on the ground. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly McLauren, if you can please unmute yourself.
You unmuted me, but I'm not Kelly McLauren.
Hi, I am Kelly McLauren, I'm calling because I have two students at Penole Valley High School. They are both vaccinated. One, they both did test for COVID on Tuesday and they were negative, and then I got a call that my kids were exposed, so I tested them again today and with no symptoms at all, but automatically they were positive. So, I just wanted to implement, I think it's very important to keep the schools open. I, my kids are currently home because they tested positive, but they would not have known if my principal hadn't called me and told me that one of my kids were exposed. And I just wanna please make testing mandatory for all students every week or twice a week if necessary so they can stop the spread of this. There's so much learning lost and I don't wanna go back to that. And I'm hoping we can keep this whole open by any means necessary safely, and I think testing mandatory is the first step to do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Kimster, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Yes. Okay, yay. I'm Jean Kintner, and I also work at Verde Elementary, and I work hard to connect to the community and to our students. I was lucky enough to be given one of the highest compliments possible by my community. One of my parents told me during parent conferences that they chose to place their last child at Verde and in my classroom instead of transferring them to a different school like all of his siblings. Apparently, the community knows me and looks forward to having their students in my classroom, and I'm honored beyond belief. But now I'm really struggling, why would you consider closing my class and splitting up my students, wrecking my wonderful culture and breaking these kids down and putting them with other people and other teachers? How is this gonna help our classes? How is this gonna help these children? It's not gonna help their social or their emotional. Do not do this to any of the kids in our district.
Our next public speaker is Misha Harris-Scant. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, it's Misha. Good evening, everybody, very good, we're close. So, really, I just wanna give some love to my students at Kennedy High School. Since we've been back, they have really been troopers. I tell my students, we can control the things that we can control, and that is a life lesson that they need to learn. So, we help each other, we sanitize, we clean when we have to, I'm giving out masks if somebody sneezes in their mask. My students are really, they're really doing their best. I can't say like, you know, everything is perfect, but what I see front-facing, that my students are doing their best to deal with this. My students are freshmen, I have one sophomore, and it is a struggle, even I as being someone who's an adult well past grown, it's even a struggle for me. But I come, I serve my students because I'm a constant in their lives and I know that they're looking at me and how I react or respond in these days and times. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to my students, I told them that I was because they are valuable, they are important. I love them dearly and they are looking at us, our students are looking at us. So, how do we present ourselves before them day in and day out? I say that to say grown folk business is grown folk business. So, let's keep grown folk business outside of the classroom because it's not for children. I pray everybody has a wonderfully blessed rest of your night, people take care, protect yourself, and until next time, I'm done, I'm out.
Our next public speaker is Elizabeth Reynolds, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Wanted to let you know about what's happening at my school for starters. We have eight classes that have three or more positive cases, and that's so eight classes without outbreaks and 244 positives. I'm speaking to urge you not to collapse classes, it's extremely, well, first of all, it would put more kids together and increase their risk, and secondly, it's extremely detrimental to them because relationships is what teaching is all about, and you, it takes a long time to connect with your kids and really establish the relationships that you need to make progress with them. And that would just be wiped out and devastated by collapsing classes. And I think you're gonna have a real rebellion on your hand among teachers if you do do that. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Nikki Hopeman, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a parent of two kids at Harding Elementary, and I just wanted to thank the board and the superintendent for their hard work keeping our schools open. I really feel like school is the safest environment for the vast majority of our children, not just for their mental health and education, but because they're masked and tested regularly. I can't get my kids tested regularly anywhere else, so I think that alone is really important for slowing community transmission. I think we need to focus now on making sure every student is tested and vaccinated, including staying firm on the vaccine mandate. Obviously, with the continually changing COVID situation, there have been some setbacks, but overall, please hang in there and keep up the good work, I feel like we can get through this together. Thanks.
Our next public speaker is Laura Brayfield. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, first I just wanna say thank you to trustee Reckler who at least acknowledged my email that was sent to all the board members, including Dr. Hurst, so thank you for that. I just wanna read from the California Department of Public Health, a publication that was put out yesterday for recommendations for students exposed to someone with COVID in a K-12 school. So, section one, subsection one says notification should occur, should occur to groups of exposed students, and an example of that would be an entire classroom, not just single-handedly picking out students who you think that don't belong there. My daughter even said that one of her classes, at least one of her classes, are never assigned seating, so how do you know from day to day where they're sitting? Section two says exposed students regardless of vaccination status or prior infection should get tested for COVID-19. Subsection two, any FDA-approved antigen test or PCR test is acceptable for evaluation of an individual's COVID-19 status. Also says in the school's guidance, or the K-12 school's guidance, that testing should be done when a student is notified of exposure, not to wait a week and keep them out of school. Section three, exposed students, it doesn't say non, or it doesn't say vaccinated exposed students. It says exposed students who participate in testing may continue to take part in all aspects of K-12 schooling, including sports and extracurricular activities unless they develop symptoms or test positive. Also, in the question and answer from the school guidance, question number seven is about remaining in school after exposure. The answer says scientific research and experience from around the country demonstrate that when both parties are wearing face masks appropriately at the time of a school-based exposure, in-school transmission is unlikely and students can safely continue in-person learning. Stop taking our kids out of school, trust that we know how to parent our children better than you do. We know how to notify the school if our kids test positive or if they're sick.
Our next public speaker is Jeffrey Bean Jr., please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Hurst. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Shannon Elementary in Penole. I want to speak to you tonight to encourage you to understand the situation for teachers and staff at schools currently. I was sick with COVID last week, I was out all week, there was no sub. Luckily, I have supportive colleagues who were able to stand in for me and take care of my students while I was out. I think this is a situation that is widespread in our district, and I was disappointed today to see the information that'll be shared with you today with Dr. Hurst's suggestion that some classes be collapsed and teachers be involuntarily reassigned. I don't think that this will actually happen, I think that it's a contingency plan, but I think it's not good for morale of teachers and staff to suggest something like this. I think there are clear things that can be done to improve safety at schools and to keep schools open. One of those would be more widespread testing. I have 27 students on a regular basis, approximately seven or eight students are tested each week. On September 12th, I emailed Dr. Hurst as soon as the new company was hired to do testing, and I said, this testing signup process is too complicated, it needs to be simplified. That's why testing is not happening, the signup process is complicated, it hasn't been fixed. I want to stay in school with my students, I had 17 present today out of 27, which is better than I'd have online. I hope we can keep open, please do what you can to make schools safe for students by increasing testing and making it mandatory. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Mark Moron. If you can, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm speaking to you today as a 21-year teacher currently at Hercules Middle School, also a parent of two students in the district, also a voter in the district. As such, I want to speak to inform you, it seems that a lot, a lot of people don't really know what's actually going on. I've been communicating with Dr. Hurst. And I have to say, all due respect, the response has been insufficient. At Hercules High School, the district hired away the computer teacher away from the high school to work downtown, making a vacancy for the rest of the year. I see, and now you're going to transfer teachers, quote unquote, to fill vacancies. Because of that, they don't have enough subs. So my daughter has to go to the cafeteria with a bunch of other classes. And because the cafeteria is so full, she has to sit outside the cafeteria because there's so many classes that aren't covered with subs. At the middle school, similar things. We've had 30 to 40% staff vacancies for the many days of the last two weeks. One day last week, we had six homerooms in the cafeteria altogether. A district staff person took four special ed classes together in the library. That staffer now has COVID. This, what you are doing is not working. And the solution you're proposing tonight is not enough. You need to have a bigger solution. Nobody wants to go on distance learning for the rest of the year, but it might make sense for a week, two weeks, until the surge is gone. Our teachers now have the skills and our students have the aptitude to be able to continue their learning during a brief period. Please consider that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Hardy. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board and Dr. Hurst. I'm a Valley View and Soskin parents. I'm here tonight because I want to give a special shout out in this difficult, difficult time, this pandemic, which has stressed all of us to the max, parents, staff, teachers, and you guys, definitely. Our principal at Soskin Middle School, Mr. Fleischman, has done excellent job this year, as he does every year. He's gone above and beyond with communication. He contacts our community several times a week and he does this even while out of the office. We're wishing him well right now. I'd also like to know what the plan is for getting us through the surge because I hear a lot of teachers, and I definitely value our teachers. They're struggling, they're tearful, and they're hurting. And so I'd really ask that we value them, that we value their inputs, and that we want them to stay in our district. I also would like to bring up the Palo Alto School District and their use of parent volunteers and offer that as a solution. I know many parents that would be willing to do that, who are vaccinated, who are badged and ready to help. We know that our teachers and our staff and our students are hurting because of this surge, which hopefully we will be through soon. I support the vaccine mandate wholeheartedly. I want to see measures continue, like testing, like volunteers coming in and helping to get us through this, to help our teachers and our staff. And last but certainly not least, I want to stress at Valley View how greatly we need a school admin who will support our staff and families. Please remove and replace our current principal before you lose more families. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Solon Harris. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board, hello superintendent. I got some, I got some suggestions. We had a town hall over there at Richmond High last night and it was really good. A lot of the parents had a lot of the concerns that was already shared. I got some solutions for you guys. One solution I think is like one of the parents just said, using parent volunteers that are already registered and giving us stipends. You guys have extra money, we need stipends. And the teachers and the students need support. And parents, a lot of parents are available to offer that support and you guys need to utilize that. And then also another thing, do a different kind of contact tracing. So what happened to me over at Richmond High, I don't have time to tell you guys, but what did work was I had a staff that called because my daughter wasn't there, she wasn't at school. So they followed and we got things sorted out because her testing was messed up. There was a lot of misinformation, things weren't communicated clearly. But because that staff called to see, to check her attendance, we were able to get everything cleared up and she got tested. It was perfect of what you guys want the outcome to be for our students and our staff. But if that staff wouldn't have took the time to do the contact tracing and that content, we wouldn't have got it straightened out where she can go back to school as a senior and finish her finals. So we need to take some of that extra money and hire more staff to do contact tracing when students are coming to contact with COVID in their quarantining or whatever the case may be, so that we can also get the funds for attendance because the children and the educators don't need to be penalized if the child is sick or if the teacher is not available to teach. So we just need to get some more systems that the student understands all the way to the board president. Everybody in between gets the same message. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Marissa Glidden. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Glidden. I'm a third grade teacher on full-time release to serve as president of United Teachers of Richmond. This has been an unbelievably difficult few weeks for everyone. Our educators and students deserve so much more than how they're being treated by the district right now. We're in the midst of a crisis and we've been in this crisis for a long time because West Contra Costa started this year with a massive educator shortage and hundreds of staff vacancies due to years of unders supporting our teachers. Our schools have been operating all year with no wiggle room and the stress of holding up an entire school district has been put on the backs and on the health of educators to the detriment of our students at this point. Now with Omicron surging and our colleagues and students falling ill, we're facing a serious crisis at many of our schools. We've had nearly 600 cases in the last three days. Over 40 classrooms are open right now. They've had a COVID outbreak with many, with some classes as many as eight positive cases. And in most of these situations, the parents have yet to be contacted. Some of our sites are missing over 30% of their teachers out positive with COVID. Educators are scrambling to fill in the gaps but are witnessing firsthand the unsafe conditions that happen when there are not enough adults on campus. We are deeply concerned about the physical safety of students. There is not enough adult supervision at many of our sites. And you are pushing your employees to the breaking point. And I'm very, very worried about how many educators will return next year. The district's proposal tonight is simply unacceptable and disappointing because it shows the district has not been listening to the people on the ground, particularly the decision to collapse classes and involuntary transfer teachers mid-year. UTR educators have been trying to share experiences and offer solutions for weeks but have not been heard. There are many other solutions to this problem, including reducing the spread of COVID on campus by providing KN95 masks to students, mandatory weekly testing, increasing the subpay to surpass surrounding districts, eliminating assessments and other unnecessary meetings or tasks for our teachers, and increasing testing for classes that have had COVID outbreaks. Please support and listen to your educators on the ground that are doing the work. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sarah Shokry. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Sarah Shokry. I just want to say greetings to everybody and thank you. I want to send appreciation to my community in Pinole and beyond and all my students from Richmond, Rodeo. Our students come from all over and we love you. The plan that's being put forward by Dr. Hurst has no safety updates. Rather, he would tear apart the cultures that we have built. You have no idea how hard it's been to try to restore community after the trauma of COVID. We have families that have lost people. We have families who have sick and elderly people at home who they're taking care of. I beg you to listen to the educators who dedicate their lives to serve our community. For those of you who haven't taught, it's not done after 3:30. It's not done after you put your children to bed. It's not done after you stay up three more hours after that grading. It's not done the next day. It's not done on the weekend. This is a commitment like none other. The district has failed to meet the safety protocols that they promised from the beginning of this year. Simple things like cleaning, I haven't had my tables wiped down once. We want what is best for our kids and families. We have weekly mandatory testing for students and staff, we need that. But that's partially because of the advocacy of the teachers' union. We met with Dr. Hurst and we made it clear, it was very clear, I'm sorry, in that meeting, that he was not going to meet any of our needs. I want to give a shout out to Pinole Valley High School, to our administrators, our families and our students. We're working really hard to keep the school open and we do not want to see it close. Our simple solutions are, and we are requesting, please, K-95.
Our next public comment is Angela Brandt. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Angela and I'm a teacher in the district and also a parent of two, one at Quormatsu and one at Fairmont. And I have to say that I agree with what the other speakers are saying. I do not feel that collapsing classes and moving teachers is productive in any way or safe and healthy in any way for anyone involved. We're used to our cohort cohorts, we have built those relationships. We've built the relationships with the parents around this virus. We understand and we trust each other. And so the idea of thinking of destroying that as a solution just does not make any sense when there are other viable strategies that can be used to alleviate the stress on the teachers at this time and on staffing shortages. So I really encourage you to look for other solutions instead of putting more burdens on the backs of our teachers, our students, and our families. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Talise. Please state your last name for the record.
Last name is Walker Trotter.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am a parent of a student at Quormatsu. I'm also a badged and vaccinated parent for 15, badge for 15 years. Fully vaccinated, boosted, you know, since that's a requirement. I, I ask, I'm here tonight to ask one, hold off on the vaccine mandate. While vaccines are important, this is still a fairly new vaccine. And it just, it's not, I think, worth losing attendance at this time to push that. But I do believe, I do agree and believe in testing being mandated. I think if, you know, we have more testing done, we could catch more cases sooner. And not just during the surge, but throughout the remainder of the school year, which I pray is in-person, because I believe in-person school is essential. Maybe not for all students, but for the vast majority. I'm also a healthcare worker and just like, you know, I believe healthcare is essential. In-person school, in-person healthcare is essential. In-person school is essential for the most part. So I ask that you, you know, take the time, figure it out. Let's get ahead of the possible next surge. Let's get through this one, let's, you know, do what we can to get through this one. I myself am available one to two days a week before help if it's wiping off desks, wiping off desks or door handles or monitoring mask, whatever it is. I mean, utilize the parents in the community, please, 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 please. And I guess lastly, I'd just like to say that, you know, I do appreciate everything that everyone has done. You know, I know there's been a lot of great work put in, but there's a lot more to go around and unfortunately, this is, we're probably not done with this. So please, let's come up with better solutions, keep these kids in school. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Rachel Archibald. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Rachel Archibald. I am a vaccinated and boosted parent to a fully vaccinated fourth grader in the district. I want to thank the, the board and the superintendent for their leadership with the vaccine mandate. I think that's so important for our, for our kids, our staff, our teachers to understand that science is so important in controlling the spread of this pandemic. And I want to just stress that I think it's so important that we keep schools open and that we do what we need to do to keep them open in a safe way. I think the district has done an incredible job in being clear on the importance of in-person learning, in-person school from the very beginning. They put in place great safety measures. I'm so impressed with the district, so thank you so much. Trustee Reckler has been incredibly responsive, as has superintendent Hurst. So I really hope that we can do what we can to keep schools open during the surge, which hopefully should be fairly short and, and things will calm down in the next three to four weeks. So thank you very much for everything you've done.
Our next public speaker is Robert Jarrett. Please unmute yourself.
All right, hi. I too am a teacher within this district. And one thing I would like to know is why weren't a lot of these issues discussed before school started? It's kind of like the school board just wanted to fly by the seat of their pants and if a surge happened, then we'll figure out what to do after we've already gone into crisis mode. That's pretty ridiculous for a group of people that supposedly care about their teachers and students. One way that we probably need to get more subs is to pay them a little bit more. If we look at OUSD and Mount Diablo, they make, or they pay a lot more money per day for their subs than we do. And lastly, to collapse classes and involuntarily transfer teachers, it's a perfect recipe to have teachers seek employment with other districts by the end of the school year. The staffing shortage within our district will be even worse next year and people are just not going to stand by with having to go somewhere else. All the talk of recruiting and retaining staff has zero meaning now since these proposals state otherwise. And it's not a teaching shortage anymore, but it's becoming a teacher flight from the insanity. Involuntarily transferring teachers will only disrupt students' learning when it's already been disrupted from the pandemic. Again, why wasn't there a place or a plan in place for COVID spikes and how to return safely after these holiday breaks? There needs to be mandated student testing for all students and staff district-wide. And we need to stop allowing schools with inept admin and principals to run their schools dangerously. Hearing about teachers having to supervise students during their duty-free lunch break is absurd and should never happen. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lupe Angianna. Please unmute yourself. Hello? The next public speaker is Ms. Tagallo. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I am Tlaub Ariel Tagallo. I am a first grade teacher in the district. I grew up in the district. I feel that there's a lack of transparency from central office down. Um, I understand that your intentions, although it may be your perception of good intentions, sometimes the delivery can come off as, um, perceptions of causing can, panicking chaos within our families. Just the thought of collapsing classrooms and also moving teachers across schools and districts can interrupt, especially from a primary age group that destabilizes a lot of their social development. So I hope with what you're hearing from parents, staff and other community members who are speaking tonight, that you consider how much of disruption this caused, whether it's mental health, their social development, as well as their physical health, how much harm you're causing. And also think of what oppressive systems are in place that these decisions you're choosing to make, because some of these decisions you're choosing to make can potentially, and we've already seen it when we were in distance learning, how much there are haves and have nots, even within the school district. Take Hercules compared to Richmond, for example, or the community that I teach compared to someone at a school in El Cerrito. How disadvantage and advantage all our families aren't put into considerations? What is equitable? Overall, what the choices that you guys do choose to make moving forward tonight? So I do thank you for your time, Board Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Hurst. So I do hope you take into consideration all these opinions, these suggestions and move forward thinking about how it is either oppressive or suggestive and how is it equitable?
Hey, our next public speaker is Mark Shaw. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
In 2018, then Board Clerk, uh, Trustee Phillips was passed over for Board President in a January 2019 Richmond Standard article he authored. He rightfully implied, and he authored, he rightfully implied in that article that the bylaw 9100 was violated. And then during December 16th, 2020, um, the board meeting then, Trustee Phillips first became Board President. He denied then Superintendent Duffy's request for agenda items stating bylaws were not followed. Now, Trustee Phillips has no problem disregarding bylaws that he once supported. Bylaw 9100 describes the format to place board members in office. The bylaw says that the board clerk will replace the board president. The bylaw says that the described format will be followed except in unusual or exceptional circumstances. And only then does the board have the ultimate discretion to elect or not elect any board member for any office. Now, Trustee Phillips claims that bylaw 9100 is outdated because it is based on at-large elections. There's nothing in the bylaw that is particular to at-large area elections. The format fulfilling board offices was clearly applicable on December 15th, 2021. Trustee Phillips has claimed he heard from multiple sources that Trustee Smith Folds didn't want to be president. He accepted hearsay as truth. Shame on Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips wants people to believe he could not find any means to communicate to Trustee Smith Folds and ask her about her desires regarding board presidency. That's nonsense. Trustee Phillips also wants people to infer that Trustee Smith Folds nomination of Trustee Gonzalez Hoy indicated she didn't desire to be president. More nonsense. She did not deny her nomination by Trustee Gonzalez Hoy. Bylaw 9100 states it is the intent of the board that all board members have an opportunity for board leadership. Under Trustee Phillips's example, what precludes Trustee Christian Reckland or Phillips or any other majority from continually nominating each other, denying the intent of the board resulting in unfair and unbalanced representation for trustee areas they do not represent? Answer? Absolutely nothing. Does the violation of the bylaws by one board justify violations by future boards? No. Did the election create more unity? No. Did the election increase trust? No. Should Trustee Christian resign his position and wait for his turn? Yes.
Please conclude your comments.
Scandalous? Yes. There are student trustees and adult trustees are modeling bad behavior to them. I hope the students ignore their example.
Our next public speaker is Adriana Larson. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name's Adriana Larson. I have a student at Quormatsu and a student at Harding. I want to thank you for hosting this special meeting. I understand before this, we were having a teacher shortage and we were already having a substitute shortage. Obviously, we're in desperate times right now. However, I would like to strongly urge you to not move forward with the plan to combine classes or require teachers for, um, to have involuntary transfers. I urge you not to move forward with this plan for several reasons. One, it will not be good for the students' social and emotional learning, which I understand everybody wants the kids to be in person for the same reason. And I, I think this would cause also social emotional problems for students. And then, um, secondly, it would not keep in the parameters of safety, of COVID safety, mixing cohorts, which I think will further exacerbate the problem that we're already seeing. Um, thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Suhe Dugan. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Sujie Duggan. Um, hello, Dr. Hurst and trustees. I'm a speech therapist with Cameron School, working with preschool students at Fort. As it stands, admin subbing is a terrible idea. Based on my experience with preschool special ed admin this week, they can't seem to take off their admin hats and pull up their sleeves to teach the kids and are instead asking random staff to come help supervise the classrooms they are subbing. Also, preschool special ed admins seem to be confused about when they can, they should ask staff to supervise. This week, when I was trying to make, take my students out of the class to work with them in a separate office, per usual, an admin unsuccessfully tried to coerce me to stay in a class where there were already four adults supervising only seven kids. The next day I found out that there was a positive staff case in that class. I could have gotten COVID if I followed the inane request and stayed there. Highly confused admin are thus recklessly endangering staff's health and safety and in turn endangering the children we work with. If admin are going to sub, better directives need to be given to admin about proper conduct and protocol when subbing. Directives can include, don't unnecessarily pull random staff into classrooms where there are already many adults supervising. Subbing admins, focus on being present, useful and supportive instead of on your phone, otherwise handing out untactful, unresearched, unsafe backseat driver recommendations. Why do admin coming to sub for preschool special ed neither have preschool nor special ed experience? Teaching is not happening when they come into sub. For preschool, they need to at least learn the basics of how to run a circle time. Otherwise compensate subs who might actually want to work with the children or bring in parent volunteers who are eager, eager to help. If we are going to rely on admin to be substitutes, they need to be more than bodies in classrooms. That's all. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maggie Whitaker. You can please unmute yourself. Hello? Our next public speaker is Becky Elliott Rico. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. My name is Becky Elliott Rico. I'm a mom to three kids in the district and I teach third grade at Madera. Last week, at the end of the week, I came down with a sore throat and a cold and then I tested positive this weekend. I've been out of school all this week. I've gotten tested four times in the hopes that I can return to my job. Not yet. I'm still positive. I'd like to give a shout out to my colleagues and families for their support. As we all know, we are in a crisis state during this COVID surge. Relationships are at the center of everything. Earlier this week, teachers got to share what was happening in schools with the superintendent, sorry. However, teachers were not consulted for contingency plans. I'm really disturbed to see option three regarding COVID surge teacher absences that says involuntary transfers process and consolidation of classes for the state of emergency. Option three would extremely be, would be extremely disruptive to everyone and further perpetuate potentially the spread of COVID. Remixing students, taking kids from settings and removing them, moving them all around. It's just a disaster. You know, we're in a wave right now of COVID. It will get better. But you need a plan for now. You need a plan for now and next week. And we're already all traumatized and stressed enough for the last two years of COVID. We're, we're over it. You know, we want a current plan for here and now. This should have been thought of over the winter break by the leadership in our district and it just wasn't, you know? So here we are, we're dealing with it. Why isn't there an option four for temporary remote learning? Politico California yesterday posted an article saying the California Department of Education approves temporary remote learning as part of independent study. Find a plan, come up with a plan. What is the leadership doing? I'm a prime example of a person who's been writing subplans every day as well as creating digital content to keep everyone on the same page. Almost half my students are in quarantine and half are here. How am I supposed to keep everybody on the same page? I'm doing the best. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lupe Angianna. She was unable to unmute herself. Please unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, board members. Um, well, I'm coming today just to support all the, to support the, the teachers and their actions that have been taken this week. I also wanted to remind everyone that this is not just a student issue and a teacher issue. This is a whole community issue. When we're talking about our students, we're also talking about families and how we are being impacted by the decisions made by the board. With testing not being mandated, you know, I have, I have my son going in person. He goes to Dejawn. He's being tested every week, but we also quarantining. We, we also don't go out anywhere. I have a newborn at home, so I'm really strict on, you know, what we do and, you know, who we come in contact with. Like I said, he's being tested every week, but since it's not being mandated, you know, a lot of kids aren't. A lot of a commi, uh, a community are essential workers. And I know a lot of families that have the need to send their kids to school, but that are also sending their kids to school sick. It's really worrisome for me because, like I said, I have a newborn at home, but the decisions that are being made on the board, they're actually, you know, impacting our whole community. They're impacting the families. They're putting us as risk, at risk as well. So I want you to really think hard, you know, how could we keep our community, our students and our teachers safe? When you're out there making decisions and the decisions have to be based on a site because every site has different needs. And I hear people calling in saying how great things are going at their sites, but some, some of our sites are not having the same. So please, like I said, remember that the safety of not just our students, but our families and also the teachers has been impacted and, you know, we're not just having burnout with our teachers. We're having burnout with our families and that, you know, the effect that is being felt by our children at the end of the day. And we have humans to raise, little humans that are going to be the adults. So thank you.
Our next public speaker will be Francisco Ortiz. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, board, uh, community, staff. My name is Francisco Ortiz. I am a alumni of the district. I'm also a fifth grade teacher on full-time release to serve as Vice President and Community Schools Organizer, Organizer for United Teachers of Richmond. Our current situation could be encapsulated by three words, failure by design. And I categorize that as such because all of this could have been prevented. We have attempted to collaborate with our district to come with a contingency plan in case of outbreaks since August. But they have been unwilling to collaborate. Apparently, our district is not listening to our students, to our families, and they're definitely not listening to our educators. Perhaps all of the parents or all of the folks who think that things are going really, really great at their site should probably come down to Richmond High and see the squalid conditions that our students have to, uh, go under when they need to go use their restroom. The health department will be receiving pictures of the squalid conditions at Richmond High. Perhaps they need to go into Richmond High's auditorium and see how many students are crammed into the theater because there aren't enough teachers to sub and cover their classes. Why are we doing this to our most vulnerable communities? Why are we not allowing them to have access to testing with all of these different barriers with LSA? Our families are calling for weekly mandated testing. Our students are calling for weekly mandated, mandated testing because they know that students are coming in symptomatic and they're scared to bring COVID back home to their families. K95 for everyone on campus and having remote temporary options in case of outbreaks. And mandatory weekly testing is what we need to keep our students safe and our schools open.
Please conclude your comment. Our next public speaker is Martin Luong. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Martin Liang. I am a trustee for the spring semester, student trustee. And I'm from a middle, college, high school. And I'd like to take this time to address some public concerns that many students are facing within the community. Uh, I come from a household that has very vulnerable family members, including a parent who is immunocompromised because of cancer treatments and elderly. And like to take this time to address the necessity for mandated testing and also a better relationship with LSA, our testing, uh, facilities. This past month, uh, I was actually COVID positive prior to the restart of schools and all testing facilities were not only super inefficient with hour-long wait lines, but also testing appointments were super uncommon and the LSA testing, uh, website was not efficient and running at all points of time. Um, I'm also a dual-sport athlete at Deansa High School, my resident school. And I also wanted to point out the concerns of the necessity of having frequent testing and how important it is for mandated testing. I think it's time to put a plan into action and I will, am willing to work with the previous commenter, Francisco Ortiz, in providing more for the students and coming up with a plan that's not only efficient and productive with the district board. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the district has planned and how we can proceed further into the semester. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Tara Taylor. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Tara Taylor. I am a teacher at Kennedy High School. And I want to reiterate what Ms. Gash said about our students. Our students are rolling with the punches, as I like to say. But I want to tell the board about the experience that I had on our first day back this week. So I did everything as a teacher to prep for the emotional return to class. And um, by lunchtime, it was very clear, once we did our testing, that the school needed to be deep cleaned. Our students waited outside for over two hours while the school was cleaned. And my students were asking me over and over again, why can't the school shut down? Or how many cases does it take for us to shut down? And I said, we don't want to shut down. We want to teach you guys in person and they got that. But I couldn't give them an answer on what the district's plan is and how many cases are too many cases. High school students go from classroom to classroom. Kennedy High School does not have windows. Our students are fearful. This week, I received over 10 emails from students telling me that their parents do not want them come to school because they are afraid they will catch COVID. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Ethan Sorcher. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ethan Sorcher and I teach fifth grade at Montalban K8. This has obviously been a challenging year and these past few weeks have been an especially challenging time. And I look forward to hearing how the district's plan will support our students and families during this time. But we also need to consider how we got here and the long-term consequences of this crisis on our profession. Our district has struggled to recruit and retain professional educators and will continue to do so unless changes are made. We've heard from the district that our staff are going above and beyond what we signed up for. We've heard that we need to continue to work together. Those words might be meaningful to some, but to others, they feel empty. Our custodial staff are going above and beyond to sanitize surfaces against this airborne respiratory virus. Our front office staff and community workers are going above and beyond to provide access to testing and ensure our students are healthy and safe before they return. And our teachers and administrators are going above and beyond to provide the highest quality education to our students in the classroom and those who are quarantining at home. But when the district takes an adversarial stance against our staff and when the district engages in bad faith negotiating, when we need to fight merely to maintain the current level of compensation, these actions speak louder than any words can. We all join this work because we want to serve students and improve our communities, but we also need to feed and shelter our families. With all the absences this month, my students are noticing how much more effective their education is when class sizes are smaller. They want to know why we don't have more teachers and smaller class sizes all year. You can calculate exactly how much per pupil funding is spent in our schools and how much is spent outside the classroom. Raising the level of compensation and reducing class sizes and caseloads will cost the district money, but also give us the tools to recruit and retain the staff that we desperately need. Instead of empty rhetoric, please advise your negotiating team to work together with our labor unions and spend our money at school sites to provide the highest quality education to all students. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Angela, Angelica Flores. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Angelica Flores. As COVID cases have risen and has caused many of us students to feel apprehensive returning back to school. I actually did a survey and posted it on my social media as a way to interact with other students. I asked them to share any worries and concerns if they had any, to which many of them shared similar responses like being scared to catch COVID and bring it back home to their families. Other students not following the safety procedures and showing up to school despite feeling sick. Potentially having to relive the trauma of losing another close family member if they return. And others were already sure they were not planning on returning because let's be real, COVID is something to be taken seriously and parents are afraid to take their children to school, especially when they see that students' well-being is not being put first in any of you guys's priority. After hearing teachers and seeing the emails that have been sent by Dr. Hertz, I can say that it is ridiculous the way teachers are being shamed for not wanting to work under the circumstances they're put in. Staff and teachers are not healthcare workers. They did not sign up for this. They deserve the support they need. Some suggestions you all should keep into consideration are consider hybrid model learning. That would, I feel like that would lower the amount of kids being in close with teachers. It would, and it could potentially be, it could potentially lower COVID cases. Provide KN95 masks for students and teachers. As we see the news, CDC does require KN95 not only for twice a week, for one week, a day. Wanted KN95 masks only work for a certain amount of hours. Therefore, we need, we need them for safety. Um, more day, more days of COVID testing provided at school instead of one times a week, make it twice or even three times a week. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maya Morris. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm a parent of two fifth graders at Olinda Elementary School. And just want to say thank you to the board for everything that they are doing during this really unprecedented crisis with the Omicron surge. As a parent, there's some things that we're concerned about. We noticed that some parts of the plan talk about meeting and conferring with the union, the teachers' union in the future. And we want to make sure that, you know, the district is meeting and conferring with the union. We want our teachers to have a voice at the table. We trust them. We support the teachers and we'll back them. Like to see, you know, free vaccination, definitely KN95 for the students, you know, not just for the staff. The KN95 masks make a huge difference. And yeah, I think that's most of it.
Our next public speaker is David Modo. Modo, please unmute yourself. Hello. Hello, sir. Our next public speaker is Sarah Torni. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to address the board, specifically Madam Should Be President Jamila Smith Folds. Thank you for holding this meeting tonight. I'm a fully vaccinated and boosted parent at Collins Elementary and Pinole Middle School. Everybody in my house who can be vaccinated and boosted is. I don't have a doctorate, nor do I pretend to be a medical detective, so I will talk from experience. I had COVID over the break and it disrupted my life. Thankfully, I did not go to the hospital or suffer more than what are being called mild symptoms. I can't pinpoint where I got it and I can't be certain who else gave it to you or who else I gave it to. That's part of the mystery behind this pandemic. One thing I did do is everything possible to make sure my loved ones did not get it from me and so far I have been successful. I don't want to give COVID to my children, but it sure feels like their health is not in your best interest. As a matter of fact, none of our children's health or their family's health or the staff's health seems to be of your concern. At our school, only 40% of the student body gets tested regularly. Parents have complained about how confusing the test site is, so they choose not to sign up. The students should be signed up for testing with the option to opt out. Let's not forget, everybody on this meeting has been dealing with the same concerns since March 2020. Sure, there are people who will say what they need to say to make the masses happy and then there are those who see the lack of planning. And now there is talk about combining classrooms and transferring teachers. Teachers and students should not suffer for the district's lack of planning ahead. The shortage of KN95 child-sized masks and lapse of testing is not a safe environment for our children. We all hope the surge is short-lived, but we need to prepare better for the next round. Short-term remote learning while tests are administered sounds like the best option. Thank you, teachers, admins and school staff for all you do. Thank you, board members, for listening tonight. We voted you in and look forward to you doing your job.
Our next public speaker is Eric Swabek. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Eric Swabek. I'm a third grade teacher at Lake Elementary. You know, I think we've missed an opportunity, but it's not too late to seize that opportunity. You know, schools are a center for the people, the community. It's where people come together and it should have been and should, should be in the future, a place where we can take care of the health of our community. We should be having mandatory testing on a weekly basis and optional for parents as well on an opt-out basis. We should be distributing quality masks as desired. We should be providing vaccines on an opt-out basis. We should be providing information about the protocols so everybody's on the same page as to what to do when we have an outbreak. I know that a lot of this is not in, you know, completely in your control that, you know, but these are the things that we need to be doing and we need to fight for those things. We should all fight for those things. But instead, and we should be thinking seriously about temporary distance learning to, in the, in the face of not having these things in place. But instead, we have this horrible idea of collapsing classes and involuntarily reassigning teachers. This is not going to help in any way at all. In fact, in my opinion, it would be the final nail in the coffin. And by stirring the pot and spreading COVID thoroughly through our community, it is the exact opposite thing that we should be doing. We should be doing the things that I mentioned first. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Leah Burns. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Well, we're all aware that the current situation is unprecedented. Falterings and failings are expected and grace is required, but so is strong leadership. And that is one thing that our district is sorely lacking. In his message on January 11th, Dr. Hurst stated that the district has taken drastic measures. In reality, the measures he was referencing are akin to offering a Band-Aid to a shooting victim. One example of this is providing all staff members with KN95 masks. The district is providing one mask per staff member per week, which means that the district is asking us to reuse these masks five days in a row, though they are single-use. Another example is testing. It is difficult to sign up for testing at schools and weekly testing for just some students, not all, is not adequate. In reality, Dr. Hurst and district admin have no comprehensive, appropriate plan to address any of the current issues. Perhaps this lack of guidance is because the district is better, is busy with other things. For example, there were three, three meetings today at the central office on assessment planning. Currently, the district sped team is at a retreat in Palm Springs. Sped is special education. These are not the actions of leaders who are taking concrete steps to address the significant issues our students are facing. These are the actions of leaders who are failing. You need to do better and doing better does not mean collapsing classes and reassigning teachers. This is an obvious union busting move. You clearly think that separating us will make it more difficult for us to organize. If you care at all about attempting to maintain student-parent-teacher relationships and continuity of curriculum, other solutions you might consider are increased testing, a hybrid in-person distance learning model until the surge has receded, parent volunteers and raising
include your message for subs. Our next public speaker is Sheila Garrett. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. I'm a retired teacher. I taught at a Catholic school in Berkeley for eight years and then in Lafayette School District for 25 years. I retired and began subbing at West Contra Costa and I love subbing. I'm at Perry's and Kensington mostly, but I'm realizing that it's really a sacrifice because the pay rate is up to 50% higher in districts nearby. So I feel like a mercenary right now, asking for more money, but you need to hire and make attractive your pay rate for subs. And also I want to reiterate what some others said about the testing signups are really hard for parents at my daughter's school. And there should be some kind of way to help families sign up for testing because I think that's a big fat answer to the problem of helping us, you know, get this thing in, in check. And maybe teachers could be paid a stipend to offer some time before school when parents are dropping off their children or after school when they're picking them up to maybe man a table and help families sign their students up because that I think is a big hurdle in the signup process. And I think that would be really helpful. Thank you. I think that's all. Good evening to everyone. And thank you. Bye-bye.
Our next public speaker is Guadalupe. Please state your last name for the record.
Perez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'm asking that you please follow the bylaws to maintain integrity. So Ms. Jamela Smith Folds should be named president. Second, please end the COVID mandate. Here are a fraction of the reasons why. One, the mandate is illegal based on the San Diego ruling, which prevented the San Diego school district's COVID-19 vaccine mandate from going into effect, which is similar to this mandate because it didn't comply with state law. Two, the vaccine mandate, sorry, the vaccine is not even FDA-approved for children under the age of 16, only emergency authorized. Three, promernity, the only FDA-approved vaccine for those age 16 and above, which is legally distinct in the United States. The vaccines put our children at risk of myocarditis and other serious adverse effects. Five, for children, the risks of the vaccine greatly outweigh the benefits. Six, by the CDC's own admission, vaccines do not prevent transmission nor infection. Eight, the punishment for non-compliance is virtual school. Virtual school is subpar and psychologically damaging to our children. Virtual school is subpar and psychologically damaging to our children. Our children need social interaction. I can't stress enough the tremendous stress that is placed on our children as they wonder and fear how the mandate will affect their higher education, their careers, and in essence, their livelihood. For all these reasons and many more, please end the mandate. Because there is risk, each parent must have the right to decide on medical treatments for their children. So it's time to end the mandate. It's time to end the tremendous stress we place on our children with the threat of removing them from their schools. It's time to end the stress we place on families as they've had to plan and discuss with their children the possibility of online schooling with its detrimental impacts or of moving out of the district or of moving out of state. Please don't dismiss the real data that we have provided. Please do your due diligence and read it. I feel like I'm in the movie Don't Look Up, but in this case, it's Don't Read Up. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Joanna Han. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. My name's Joanna Han. I'm a parent first and foremost, and also a healthcare provider. Please don't collapse the classes. The teachers have already built rapport with the children. Keep the the teachers in their own schools. The children have already suffered enough. When is enough? I'm actually going to read you something from the Cleveland Clinic, who gets their directives from the CDC regarding testing. The PCR test is considered, quote, "gold standard," unquote. Because the PCR test is so sensitive, it can detect very small amounts of virus material. This means that the test can continue to detect fragments of the COVID virus even after you've recovered from the COVID-nineteen and are no longer contagious. Fragments of the virus material can be detected three months later, according to the University of Texas. Healthcare agencies in Canada and the UK also recognize that PCR tests can't have positive results three months after a person was initially diagnosed with COVID-nineteen. This persistent positivity has been shown in studies. All right. Also, what about the children that now have tested positive for COVID? They have antibodies. Why mandate the vaccine? I'm not an anti-vaxxer at all. I have all my vaccines, but I am anti-COVID vaccine for the children. I was even going to get my booster shot right after I got COVID last month. I had to do it to keep my job, but even my employer, which is a very large healthcare organization, stated, "Don't get the booster, wait ninety days because you have the antibodies." Do you go and get the flu shot after you get the flu? The California Department of Health just recently put out a directive on asymptomatic healthcare workers who test positive. You don't need to quarantine, just go to work. Why can't the asymptomatic children go to school? Also, I'm wearing the N-ninety-fives. To correctly wear the N-ninety-five, you have to be fit-tested. And I don't think everyone is fit-tested. There's various sizes, facial hair, facial size. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Also, there's an accurate way to put on even the straps. Using the equipment's half the battle. This is going to be an endemic. We just have to hang in there. Question is, when is everybody going to get COVID? I know people that have gotten vaccinated, got their boosters, stayed home, got COVID, vice versa, people that were out partying, all of that stuff. Let's be pragmatic here. I feel like this is another knee-jerk reaction to everything that has happened in the past two years. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is David Module. Please unmute yourself. Hello? Hello, Mr. Module? Okay, our next public speaker is Cheryl Phantom. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker will be Stella Miranda. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, school board trustees and Superintendent Hirsch. Tonight, I want to discuss the blatant disregard for the trustees' bylaws. Your lack of transparency is disgusting, to say the least. Numerous parents, teachers, and community members have asked you, and two of you have failed to respond. You're public officials and you represent our community. We deserve at least a response to our questions. Two school board members, you know who you are. You made feeble attempts to to justify your actions, and they're not acceptable. One-sentence responses do not address questions that you have a response. You have not been responsible, and they are unacceptable. Let's not forget the untruths told by one school board member who is not here tonight. You know exactly who you are, and I don't need to mention your name. Why is it so difficult for you to respond to a question? Bylaw ninety-one hundred is very clear. The outgoing president appoints the clerk, in this case, Jamila Smith Folds. Yet you nominated Mr. Christian, totally ignoring bylaw ninety-one hundred. The exact same thing was done to Mr. Phillips in December twenty eighteen. Okay, show us your proof. But you're blatant untrue, and you cannot justify it. What unusual and it's unacceptable and exceptional circumstance occurred that you deny Ms. Phillips, Ms. Smith Folds, her rightful position to presidency? I can reference Mr. Phillips' response to me. Sorry. I'm having difficulty with my vision. Sorry, because I'm diabetic. I still have more to say.
Our next public speaker is Aseedo Wilson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Sado Wilson. You may recognize the voice because I call it to school board meetings all the time. For everyone that is out there listening, I'm an educator at Richmond High School. Let's go back and figure out how we got here. I want to remind you of something. This has nothing to do with the fact that schools were closed or teachers are advocating for their students and communities are advocating for their children. This has to do with the facts based on decisions that were made on the previous presidency of last year. There was an opportunity to discuss an opening plan, April twenty-eighth on twenty-twenty-one. You can YouTube it. WCCUSD School Board Meeting, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, at the four-hour thirteen-minute mark to the six-hour three-minute mark, there is a discussion regarding what we can do for reopening. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy had an idea to actually add, change language, and add a lot of things that would have helped us this past school year. Trustee Smith Folds agreed. However, trustee Reckler was hesitant around the word intent, because if the word intent was there, that means we may would have to close school again. So that was voted no. Our former president, he voted no. And finally, the swing vote. Our current president took nine minutes to vote and voted no, and that's what got us in this position. So we need to go back to that. Again, check out the YouTube clip. So that's where we're at right now. We are in a mess. We all know this. Richmond High students are stuck in an auditorium in a school with no windows, with air filters that do not work. I have talked about my ill fortune so many times in my classroom. Louise Freeze just answering my email is not enough. So, moving forward, there needs to be a plan. And here's will not, here's what's unacceptable and will not be tolerated, the blatant disrespect and browbeating of teachers from this school board. We are hanging in there. You owe us a plan. This is what you are supposed to do. This is what you are mandated to do. So you need to do something. As my colleague says, do better, retire, resign, quit, do what you need to do. Good night.
Our next public speaker is Audrey Shields. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Audrey Shields. I'm so glad I'm able to speak. I was worried that I wouldn't get a chance to speak, because you guys have got so many speakers lined up. This should have been cut back to one minute per person. But my my comment and my bone to pick tonight is is the board presidency. We need strong leadership in the district as well as on the board. The whole philosophy of the ninety-one-hundred bylaw is so that a person, a board member can, all the board would get leadership experience, and one member would get in and serve one year as a clerk and learn everything there is to learn about being the president, and then step up the following year with knowledge and understanding and ability and strength and lead the board in a successful operation. We have very, very we've got, we need to work on leadership. We don't have strong leadership. We need strong knowledgeable leadership. I think trustee Smith Folds has demonstrated time and time again her passion, her commitment, her willingness to work hard, her willingness to dig deep to understand issues that are affecting our school district, issues that are affecting our children, issues that are affecting our teachers. She's a former teacher. She's been in the education system. She's clearly qualified and capable of providing strong, focused leadership for this district in these desperate times of COVID and crises for children of colors that we've been suffering for the last one hundred years, including my own education that I suffered more than fifty years ago here in Contra Costa County. It was, it's only, the bylaw makes it clear that leadership should be passed on to the person moving out of the clerk office. The politics and the play that's going on needs to stop. If this is going to be a stain on ulterior Christians' representation or presence on the board, if he doesn't step down and support Commissioner, trustee Smith Folds presidency on the board, she needs, we need her. The district need her, the students need her, parents need her, the leadership is needed in this district. Trustee Christensen will have plenty of time to 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 serve on and on the board and in leadership capacity. This is not his year. This is not his year. He needs to step down. The community needs to speak up and support
Conclude your comment.
That we have a strong leadership that we so deserve and our children deserve. Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker for the night will be Lisa Dispro. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to apologize to all those who were waiting and hoping to make their comments. I wish that were possible. I wish that decision were different. I'm a recently-retired West Contra Costa teacher and alum. And I just want to say that as a primary teacher, I I know I just want to agree and confer and congratulate all those who have advocated for permanency, for stability, for cohesion, for our children to remain in their classrooms with their teacher. They have, this will be like a third year of intense trauma. And you cannot, you cannot magically snap your fingers and create systems and relationships and goodwill between students and parents and comfort under these stressful times. If you keep shaking the the basket up and throwing people around, it just doesn't work. You'll be adding to the trauma. In addition, I would like to say that I retired, sadly, because I did not want to mask-enforced nor be vaxxed. I want to say, please go to nomandates2021@gmail.com where you can actually see products such as Clear Collidal Silver Throat Spray, Vitamin C, D3, Zinc, K2, and Magnesium that can specifically reduce and protect each of us from COVID and the severity of the illness. Thank you.
Trustee Christian, I have a point of order. President Christian, I have a point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we have seven hundred and twenty-six students and we never announced when the thirty minutes would be extended, nor did we vote on it as a board, can we extend again and have a motion and do a vote to extend it again? You have the ability to do that. You said you were going to extend it for an hour and a half, but we never announced when the hour was up and the thirty minutes will start, so people kept raising their hand under the assumption that we're still taking public comment. Is there a possibility to extend again and offer cutting it down to one minute so we can get through the majority of the forty-eight people that are still with the forty-seven people that want to still speak? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, you say extend the meeting for another thirty minutes?
I'm saying extend it until we get through the people. The last person that I saw that the, I've been watching it, and the last person that I saw before you said it was the end of it. The last person I saw, and I could be wrong, but the last person I saw was Melinda McCary. That's the last one I saw, but I'm saying we could probably get through these people if we take it down to a minute apiece instead of two minutes apiece. So at least we would be able to hear them. And you could also ask President Christian in the bylaw, it says that you have the right to ask that if the president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. You don't have to ask that, but that is in the bylaw if you wanted to add that and see if some people would like to drop off and send an email. But if we still have these people, maybe we could get through.
Okay. Trustee
Thank you, President Christian. So I see there's fifty-four hands up, trustee Smith Folds, which would add another hour under a one-minute public comment. I, of course, want to hear our public, and it's been an hour and a half so far. Would you be okay if we extended it for thirty more minutes and we took thirty more hands? Or did you want to go through the fifty-two that are that are left? That would be I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful to end the board meeting on time, and that's obviously a lot of hands still.
So what I would like to suggest is, what I'm willing to do, maybe other colleagues would join me in this, is because of the slides, we have about ten slides on the superintendent's report, right? I'm willing to ask a limited number of questions to hear from these people on the ground, because these are the realities that we need to actually hear and be able to discuss and talk about. So for me, I would limit my questions and send most of them an email to the superintendent and then publish those responses if I'm able to hear from the people on the ground. Would that work, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
So what you're saying is that you would propose that we limit our questions to a certain number so that we can allow every speaker to go ahead and speak tonight?
Yes, sir. That would be my, that would be my compromise. Let's listen to the people on the ground and the parents on the ground in the community. We have ten slides, so those can be done very quickly, and then we limit our questions. And the other questions that we have, we either pick back up on the nineteenth to ask the superintendent, or we send them in an email, and then he can address them on the nineteenth in his superintendent's report. That would be my suggestion.
May I ask you how many questions, but then would you limit the board to to ask for the rest of the night?
Because of the previous way that we've been doing it, we're used to asking four questions. As much as that's not what we may want to do, that's what we're used to doing. So if we could each ask four questions about the entire report and then put our other questions in an email and those questions be answered on the nineteenth, or those questions be answered to the entire board through the superintendent responding to all of us.
Well, I personally don't have a problem. I think that everybody else needs to weigh in, but we we are going to, we were going to announce a little bit later, change in the format of number of questions, which was five. So because we were going to announce that later, my suggestion would be that we do five so that we stay consistent to what we're going to do moving forward.
I'm definitely okay with doing more than four questions. But maybe we should limit trustee Gonzalez, clerk trustee Gonzalez Hoy, maybe we should limit the amount of rounds then for this particular meeting, because we're listening to, because we want to take the next fifty people. Maybe we don't go around and around. If we have to, we do one round, and then maybe we could send the rest of our questions on and have them addressed. and have them addressed on the nineteenth. Would that work?
Yeah. So we just do the thirty minutes.
President Christian, maybe a suggestion is that if you, you maybe ask the rest of the board what they think and then go with what the majority would like to do?
Yep, you can do that. All right. And we'll start off with tonight's order. And actually, tonight's order will, uh, we'll start off with trustee Cole, trustee, uh, Trehalio, trustee Phillips, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, trustee Smith Fole, and trustee, oh, excuse me, trustee Regler, and then trustee Smith Fole and myself. So we'll go through and, um, take a vote. Can I get a with, it was already a motion?
Um, so it wasn't necessarily a motion. It was just this suggestion on how to move forward with public comment. Uh, I'm not sure if trustee Smith Folds, they went to make an official motion, but uh, she went, I, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, trustee Smith Foles, she wanted to offer that as a suggestion for you to then decide if that's how we could move forward with public comment.
Okay.
Yes, sir. President Christian, what I wanted to do was have you use your authority that's found in Board Bylaw ninety-three twenty-three. And that gives you the ability to extend to increase or decrease public comment, right? So it would be you increasing public comment until we take the last person, which is Perez, as I see it on the thing that's forty-nine, or the last person would be Perez. And then we as a board agree to that because we are limiting our questions to five questions for one round. Any other questions we had, we would just then send to the superintendent with the intention for him to address those on the nineteenth. But it's within your authority to do it. You would just have to ask us, the board president, then turns around and asks us, are we willing to extend until we hit the last person on the screen and you have to call who that last person is?
Okay, so we just go ahead and we'll make a motion. So you made a motion and then we have somebody, the second motion.
So it's not necessarily a motion, but if you would like to ask the rest of the board if they agree or not, you could ask us to, to do a, uh, you know, yes or no symbolically. Uh, since this doesn't require a motion, it's in your purview.
Okay. All right, so we'll start off with trustee, uh, trustee Cole.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Trehalio.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
Can somebody repeat the motion for me? Um, I came in mid-conversation.
President Christian, would you like me to repeat that? Um, trustee Phillips, trustee Smith Foles suggested that because we have such large number of speakers that she would like us to finish all the speakers that are left. Uh, limit speaking to one minute. Finish the, finish the, the number of speakers, but then limit the number of questions for the board to five questions tonight total um, in one, in one single round. Uh, that way we get out of here at a, a okay time.
I think it's the discretion of the president as to whether or not he extends public comment. Uh, so I won't be voting on that as far as the questions are concerned. I'm glad to hear you all talking about limiting questions so we can get out on time. Those are my comments.
Uh, trustee Regler.
I apologize. I cannot hear and hear at all. My recommendation, well, first, I don't vote to extend meetings, so this meeting is over for me at ten thirty. I'm in schools helping sites and I think the rest of us are, are doing similar things and I know that staff is fried, so this meeting is over at ten thirty. I do recommend that President Christian asks those who may not have something new to add to the conversation, perhaps drop off and email it in and that, uh, the rest of public comment stays as focused as possible. And then we can continue with, um, some pressing questions to ask the superintendent. There's a lot on here that I think that we need to address and the community would like to hear. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Smith Fole.
Trustee, uh, President Christian, I would like you to use your authority to extend the meeting. I would like us to reduce the time to one minute so we can hear from the community that is on the ground and the realities that they're going through so we can make an intelligent decision about direction that we want to give the superintendent. This is a discussion meeting, so we need to hear from the community. So I would ask you to use your authority to extend.
Okay.
And I'm voting yes for the extension. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Phillips.
I honestly do not have a preference, and this is just a point of order. I don't have a preference as to whether you extend public comment. But it is at your discretion to do it. It's our bylaws. And so when people vote or make motions to have you do something that the bylaws say you have discretion to do, they are taking away your authority. Whether you do this or not is up to you, and I do not have a preference. But I want to make sure that you understand what's happening right now. There's a vote to make you do something that you have discretion to do or not to do.
Mr. Phillips, there is no vote. There is no vote. He was, President Christian was asking for what other people think about what was brought to the floor, which is bylaw ninety-three twenty-three. That's what was happening. So there was no vote. There was just a discussion about the bylaw and an acknowledgement that the bylaw exists and President Christian has the authority to then use that bylaw or not use that bylaw. But just like you asked for the board, when you use the same bylaw to extend public comment, you asked the board, I need to have y'all's vote. It's on film. You asked for both of the board. When we did this on December the fifteenth, yes, you did. Go back and look at it. When we did this on December the fifteenth and we asked for trustee Christian to use his authority in the bylaw, there was also a vote. It's on film. There was also a vote. So if we don't have to vote, good, let's move on because we've spent twelve minutes doing this. We can move on if trustee Christian has heard the majority of the board. We still need to hear. We've heard from both student trustees. You've heard from trustee Gonzalez Hoi and, and you've heard from me. Trustee Christian, now is up to you to either extend or not extend. And but there's no vote, but we did vote before.
Yes, and, and now we will move on so we can, uh, finish and that we could proceed on. So we will uh, do one minute. And, um, and we will stop at the, the last person that was, who was the last person? Trustee Smith Fole.
Let me check right now. So the last person, the last person when we started this discussion was Perez. You have one person after, I'm sorry, you have two people after Perez now with the last name R A U is the last person with their hand up now. But when we started this discussion, the last person was Perez, last name Perez.
Okay, so we'll allow staff to pick up from there. Uh, and then we'll go through and finish and move on.
Our next public speaker is Mashawn Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Hurst. Um, I do have something new to say. Um, I have a ton of notes, but I'm gonna say my one thing. We are talking about, we need a plan, we need a plan. But I'm sitting here thinking, maybe the issue are the people we're using to make the plan. So there's no plan, maybe because we need to configure the groups of people that we plan with. Uh, maybe, um, Dr. Hurston Board, if, you know, you extend your reach uh, like, uh, trustee Smith's fold says, come deal with some of us on the ground. Um, that way, um, decisions that are made and ideas that are brought to the table won't be so top-heavy and demanding. Um, yeah, um, that's what I have to say. Maybe add some groups. Don't just listen. Come and listen to what people have to say, but actually have a dialogue. Um, board members and Dr. Hurst. You know, we do need a plan, but I'm, I'm just thinking if, if there's no plan and if you go back to what Sado said, how did we get here? There wasn't a plan then and several months later, there still is no plan. So you know, maybe if you utilize teachers that have been in the district forever, if you utilize staff members that have been in the district forever, staff members that are fairly new. Um, I, I think we need some visionaries. Um, and as multiple people have said, you know, we need some strong leaders. And there are ample amounts of teachers in the classrooms and staff members, the stodians, office personnel who can give some vision and some clarity. So, uh, maybe think about reconfiguring some of the groups of the people that you plan with Dr. Hurst. You know, so we can get the plan that's needed, the plan that's necessary, the plan that makes sense. But if, if everything
Your comments?
Uh, there's nothing wrong with friction. Sometimes we meet people on our team who disagree with us for the best outcome for everybody. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mariela Cuellar. Please unmute yourself. Hello? Hello? Our next public speaker is Scotty. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Scotty Smith. And, uh, first I'd like to say in, in the interest of transparency, uh, we need to have clarification in terms of the selection process of the December fifteenth meeting from the attorney for the district and whether or not the bylaws was followed. So therefore I am asking at the next meeting that the attorney of the district speak to the public about whether or not that process was on the up and out. The next thing is I am concerned that districts are being put into a terrible position across the state. You have Tony Thurman out there handing out uh, masks in Castro Valley and here, a district that he served in for a short period of time. Uh, we are suffering greatly financially and in terms of this pandemic. I think it is time for, for the community to look beyond this district and start advocating at the state level for the changes that we need to have.
Please conclude your message.
It's not gonna happen here on the local ground.
Our next public speaker is Joanne Bean. Please state your last name for the record.
Benelinding, Benelinding.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Benelinding.
Okay, thank you.
So hi, my name is Joan and I'm a district alumni and now working in the district in the health educator capacity at three of the high schools. I'm frustrated and exasperated at some of the things that I've heard from the students I work with. The pressure and urgency to keep students in person is understandable considering the loss of learning in the previous year. However, students aren't in school anyways. They're not even in the classrooms due to the necessary isolation and quarantine guidelines. Teachers are out. There are days where it's just subs or other teachers' periods subbing with no structured lesson plans. It's not fair to the students and their families and it's not fair for the teachers. I'm told there's the option of independent study, but from what I'm hearing, there's a waitlist for that. I know Zoom learning is not ideal, but there needs to be something done about the learning loss that is still happening regardless. Please listen to the teachers and listen to the students and their families regarding their health, safety and the right to equality education. Please just get it together. Thank you.
Just a reminder for our public speakers, we are, uh, doing one minute per person. Thank you. And our next public speaker is Natasha Benjamin. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a parent of two children in the district. And I just want to express how important it is that we keep our community safe and we keep our schools open. My daughter just told me that she thinks we should close the schools because everyone has COVID and doesn't feel safe. This breaks my heart. We need to do better for these kids. Especially after what they've been through for the last year and a half, almost two years. We need to keep the schools open and safe for our kids. In order to do this, we need to test and keep testing. Testing is critical. We know that it's as important as vaccines right now to control transmission. I signed up both my kids to test every week. All families need to do this or they need to automat- automatically be signed up for testing and then you can opt out. As a community, we should all want to do this to keep our schools open. There needs to be better contact tracing and communication with families about cases. As a parent whose child just had COVID and reported to the school, the, there was no communication or further reporting to teachers and other students about this. Parents want to help, please let us know how to do this. There's many of us that are willing to help and volunteer in the schools. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Emily's mom. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Dominga Rivera. And my daughter Emily is a student at Lake Elementary School. Um, she's a second grade um, student there. My concern is basically the safety. There is no safety at the schools for these kids. Um, my daughter is the only one that goes to school right now at this point, but I do have four grandbabies that do live with us from ranging from the age of two months all the way to two years old. And my concern is basically her getting COVID and bringing it home and then we all get infected, including the babies. And as you guys all know, it's not safe. The schools are not safe. I don't know why you guys just don't go to remote learning, at least for two weeks, until this like calms down a little bit. Um, Lake needs help. They need help with people cleaning after the other kids. Um, they have a kindergarten class that's out right now because of COVID positive. And I heard that that kindergarten class keeps on having positives. So please listen to the teachers. I'm up for whatever the teachers want. So please listen to the teachers and the parents' concerns. That's all I'm asking for you guys. Pay attention to what's going on.
Our next public speaker is Julia Gemseed. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for extending the time so we could speak. I'm a sixth grade teacher at Madera. And I think, um, what I want to say is to many of you admin people and Superintendent Hurst and, um, some of the board members, you maybe we're teachers at some point, um, and I believe you've forgotten what it's like to be a teacher in your soul. Um, so it's feels like there's a big disconnect there. You're, you're over there making decisions for all of us and um, it just, uh, it's, you know, I think you're just removed from what's actually happening. I'd like you to consider that. Uh, it's very maddening to have our lives, um, toyed with like this from people who feel are kind of removed from what's happening. So, um, uh, I'd like to say that also it, I don't think we'd be in this situation if the federal, uh, funding that was dispersed would have been spent how it should have been spent instead of going towards, uh, shoring up the deficit and or hiring, um, people who are getting huge salaries in the district office. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Ashley Bonifacio. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, um, my name is Ashley Bonifacio. Um, I'm a parent of a child that attends, uh, Downer Elementary. She's in the special education preschool classes. Um, I want to thank you so much for letting me speak tonight and, uh, for Jamila Folds for extending the time for public, uh, comment. Um, I have two children who are, um, under the age of being vaccinated. They cannot get vaccinated. I feel like we've been forgetting the people who can't get vaccinated, who want to get vaccinated. And, um, also my daughter being autistic, she can't wear a mask very well. Along with a lot of her peers in her class, she wears a mask, but she can't wear it very well. So when I was very surprised to hear that, um, you aren't going to be supplying N ninety fives and K nine and ninety five to the students. We need to do what we can to protect those most vulnerable, and that's appropriate masking, testing every week. Um, the, our teacher in our school said that she, her class hasn't been thoroughly cleaned, even though there was a two days that you guys shut down.
Please conclude your comments.
And we need better air ventilation in the classrooms. We can't just rely on windows in the winter to keep our classrooms ventilated. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Hannah Gaetner. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Hannah Gaetner. I am a special education teacher at Steege Elementary School. Um, and really I, I don't even know where to start, to be honest. This has been, I've been working in this district for four years now. And this is one of the time, the past two weeks, I have felt the most disrespected as an educator, as a caretaker to students in this district, um, as a community member. And I cannot believe, Dr. Hearst, your rhetoric to teachers this week. Unacceptable, just absolutely embarrassing. Um, you are making us the scapegoat when really all this comes back to is the leadership sitting around the table right now. You're not keeping us safe. You're disrespecting, um, teachers, students, staff, the disabled community, the immunocompromised community, the elderly community. This is about keeping Richmond safe, and you're not doing it.
Our next public speaker is Kimberly Chamberlain. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm here in person. This is Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local Twenty One Chapter President for SSA. I am here to advocate that we have, as classified staff, been put in classrooms, been moved out of our positions, been put at risk, now have COVID in many cases, brought it home to our elderly parents. Because in the last two weeks, we have been placed in classrooms and at school sites where we normally would not be. That was not communicated well with us before we were given no choice than to go into those classrooms. I am asking everybody that is listening tonight to not just go towards this board and the administration. Go to your state representatives, go to Superintendent Thurman, go to Governor Newsom. They need to be putting money towards our schools and our students' health, our staff. It's not just up to our board members. It's not just up to our administration anymore.
Please conclude your comments.
We need to have our families thought of first, and our government is the people to do that. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Tracy Lefrenier. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Um, so I am one of those teachers that was involuntarily reass- or, yeah, reassigned. I've been at five schools this year, and I can tell you the stress that that has caused on me and my students and my school sites. Please talk to us if you're gonna make any plans about reassigning. Um, cause we are all going through it again, and those of us that were in it before, we're totally afraid again. Um, the other thing I want to do is a shout out to Soskin and also to, to Murphy. Murphy has been doing all of their own contract chasing. And I would just like to say that they are a site that should be looked at for what they are doing. The other thing I would like to say is we need some guidance for those parents that do not have, um, insurance cards. That is the main fear of parents. The other thing is, is that, um, my son has been in a classroom with a teacher who has caught COVID. And he.
Conclude your comment.
And he has not been notified by contract chasing that he was a close contact. I had to self-quarantine him. We need better contact tracing and more people doing it. Let's include the office staff and the people on site like Murphy. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Bridget Seewich. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, for the record, this is Bridget Garcia. My child is a vaccinated student at Betty Reed Soskin, and I appreciate everything the principal Fleishman has been doing. Everyone who says that they want the children to stay in school to avoid loss of learning are ignoring that, that all of the dozens of students who are out at any given time due to coronavirus are experiencing loss of learning themselves. The latest research shows that Omicron is expected to have higher reinfection rates, which means that we're headed towards an ongoing cycle of students getting sick, missing school, coming back and getting re-exposed. I request two weeks of distance learning to break this cycle. And upon returning, I want daily KN ninety fives for everyone who is on campus. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lucy Giostro. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lucy Giusto. I'm a teacher at Hercules Middle School. I've been there for twenty years, and I'm also a parent of a student in the district. It is clear to me in the time that I've been here that we have these check off the box. We're gonna listen to the community and then do whatever we want. Trustee Jamila Smith Folds is the first, the first board member who is authentic and listens to the community. So when she speaks, she speaks for us. And it is appalling that our own board members do not know how to follow the rules. It's ridiculous. It is a very bad message to our community and to our students that the behavior and the way they talk to each other is abominable. And on Facebook, to talk to community members like Ms. Scotty Smith, who's also a voice of the community, to be talked down to the way that she was, is abysmal and abominable. Do the right thing and follow the rules. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Clear. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Sam Clear, and I, I teach at Steege Elementary School. I hope you are all doing well and I'm hoping the best for everyone during these challenging times. Firstly, I would like to express my gratitude for all of my colleagues and stage community members. I feel very lucky and thankful to work here. I am speaking today because we need more support. We at stage are working as hard as we possibly can. Our principal is even teaching a class full time. Our academic coach had to take a class as well. We have two classes without present teachers. Therefore, when individuals get sick or have COVID, we have absolutely no wiggle room. Unless you have been in the situation, you couldn't possibly imagine the stress and fear that we all feel. As a complete community, not just teachers, but as parents, caretakers, students and staff members united, we are filling out a petition demanding for mandatory and accessible testing, KN ninety five masks for children, and a clear plan for the staffing shortage effects of the Omicron variant surge. Most of the petitioners are caretakers. Students are proud to fill out the petition as well. They are impressed and inspired by our community. The petition's comments have been overwhelmingly supportive of siege and is, and is doing to keep everyone safe. I ask, would you send your loved ones to a school where the windows?
Please conclude your comment.
Treat us like you treat your own families.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Anualu Wapo Olabode. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Jamie Chavaria. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good, um, evening. So, um, I just wanted to say like, I'm not gonna go into every, what everyone else is talking, but you guys are making it seem like what is more important is the funding that the schools receive if they're open, instead of the safety of the kids and the teachers. It's not fair for the teachers to have to go to other schools or for students to get transferred to another classroom just because of the whole COVID thing. Like, I've heard they have to stay open, even if they just have two kids that are testing negative. My family got COVID. I had to quarantine. I was told my daughter could go back in. I did not take her because I did not want to risk the other families. My son has cancer and I'm afraid, like, I was afraid to bring COVID in. And it, it came to my house and now it like, to the point where you guys just really do not about the safety of the teachers and the kids. So it's pushing me to talk to other parents and other teachers and do a petition in order to send them. Cause all it's matter right here, right now is the funding.
Our next public speaker is Mariela Cuellar. Please unmute yourself. Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, the next public speaker will be Tanya Garcia Peña. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for this meeting, but it is very important that you act based on educators and staff. Every day we receive changes in the protocols that seem to be in favor of the economy, polit- politics. I understand that we are in a difficult moment, but the only ones who are solving the problems in the schools are the teachers and staff. Every day I see teachers, my principal, office personnel who arrive with the stress or do not arrive because someone else is infected. The solution of combining classes is one more reason why many teachers, like me, feel disrespectful. Thank you to my principal, coworkers, responsible students and families at Dover School. I love my job, but I feel like the county superintendent board speech is on paper that they support the schools, but I don't really feel support in the schools. Gracias por esta reunión, pero es importante que se actúen en función de los educadores y el personal. Todos los días recibimos cambios en los protocolos que parecen estar en favor de la economía y la política. Gracias.
Our next public speaker is Carla. Please state your last name for the record.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
My last name Banks.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna try to condense everything. Um, I am a mother of four. One kid is one years old. Uh, three of them are students at Collins Elementary, first grade, second grade, and fourth grade. Um, upon the first week back, seven students tested positive, two staff members tested positive, and those are only the known cases. Um, today, I mean, there were also positive cases after last week, but today there were four separate positive cases. My main concern, um, being scared to send my kids is because I share custody of my two girls, first grade, second grade. They go from my house to their grandmother's house to their dad's house. Um, not only is that secondary contact, there's tertiary contact with, um, my fiance's job, uh, their dad's job, the errands that their grandmother runs. So, um, the, the superintendent sends out emails saying that the students', uh, mental and, um, physical and mental health is, the welfare of the students is what they are, um, I guess, protecting, but.
Please conclude your comment.
Students have lost family members due to COVID. Sending them to school scared that they might catch COVID is, that's, it's, it's traumatic.
Our next public speaker is John. Please state your last name for the record.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
My, uh, last, well, my name is Randy Hadley. I'm a parent of, uh, Soskin's Middle School. Um, and it's a comment and then also a suggestion. The comment is, first off, I'd like to thank all the teachers, administrators, and everyone who's working hard to, to try and keep everyone safe. Thank you to all the teachers, um, and everyone. Then, uh, just like to say that, that these times are really, really hard at Soskin's. Like last week, there was multiple fights, um, and this is even before you guys took a, a snow days to break. And I, I imagine that's because of the lack of staff and everyone's out. So then the suggestion I have is that you guys utilize, um, volunteers. There's a, um, you know, if you could push for it and then live scan parents or parents who already have their, their card and been live scanned, utilize the parents and push it out and ask for, for assistance from parents and volunteers. So that's it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Burnett Crockett. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Leslie Martinez. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Saragosa. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Hello, my, my name is Victor Saragosa. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I am a Richmond High teacher, and I've been at the Richmond High, uh, campus for about five years. Um, I, I want to thank you for extending the time for, to allowing us to speak. Um, I'm actually still in my classroom waiting in line to be able to, to hear you guys speak. I mean, to, for you guys to hear me speak, this tells you in general, um, how badly we, we want to be listened to. Um, I, I want to share with you the results to a survey that went out a, at our school where about nine hundred students and, and parents, uh, responded to. Um, over sixty-seven percent of students that are coming to school do not feel safe coming to school. Over fifty-five of them do not think like it's, it's a good idea to be on campus. Um, it is clear to me that this, we are in this situation because there was black, bad, really bad planning since the start. Um, the best proposal that, that I've heard is to hit the pause button and close the school down for a week or two, so we can plan better, recover in health, and be able to, um, have a, a better system where we are able to listen to the people in the ground every single day with the students exposing ourselves. Thank you.
Our next. Our next public speaker is Jacqueline Vargas. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline and I am a student at Richmond High. Although I am one of the students who does better in an in-person setting than in a virtual setting. I strongly believe that there is an urgency for the district to take a pause for a week or two. I have very bad anxiety and getting emails about exposures has not been easy on me. And I'm sure it has not been easy on my classmates and teachers. It is ridiculous that students are expected to learn. And teachers are expected to teach when everyone is constantly worried about getting a virus. Also, it is really upsetting that you expect students to feel safe. At schools when you are providing teachers and staff with the most protective face mask, but don't give the same resources to students. Please stop seeing us as numbers that provide with fun, that provide you with funding and see us for what we are. Humans who need a safer environment to learn. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Chandra Share. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. I'm a second grade teacher at Aloney Elementary. And I have to say, this has by far been the most challenging year of more than a decade-long teaching career for me. I do not think that closing classes and transferring students is the answer to fixing the district issues. We need strong, clear policies about testing. We need contact tracing that is actually happening, so that. Teachers and students are notified when they have an exposure and so that we can isolate cases before they spread in the classrooms. Many teachers are not being notified of exposures, nor are their students or families. This absolutely needs to change as soon as possible. Teachers are totally willing to let families know of exposures, but we can't do so. If we're unaware of these positive cases. I also strongly feel that students need KN ninety-five masks as well, not just teachers. And should be supplied by the district. Please consider offering one mask a day to everyone. Using masks can cause skin irritation. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Cassandra. You can please state your last name for the record.
Morales. My name's Cassandra Morales. I'm a student teacher at Richmond High. I'm here to read the demands. Written up by the students of your district. First demand is better testing sites for the community. More at-home tests, better air filters for classrooms because there are no windows or proper ventilation at Richmond High. The promised K ninety-five mask provided for teachers and students. As well as two times a week PCR and rapid testing. As of now, Richmond High rapid testing is only there one day a week. When research shows that rapid testing is only effective when it's done multiple times a week. Students are also demanding an actual COVID team with contact tracers and outreach. And increased opportunities for students to continue learning and not be forced to turn in work and should be allowed extensions. Students are being punished. For your lack of planning, your irrationality and your misinformed leadership. You're really fucking this up.
Our next public speaker is Akanya Robinson Webb. Please unmute yourself. Hello.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I would like to thank trustee Jamila Smith Folds for always making sure that our voices are heard. We really do appreciate you. Secondly, I would like to say that I am shocked that the district did not have a more comprehensive plan coming into the school year. And did not expect that these outbreaks would occur. And I do hope that you all are planning for the next outbreak. Which will probably be next winter time. Also, I would like for you all to consider. Moving forward, maybe hybrids classes in schools. Because some of the kids are excelling in, in online learning, but still miss that social contact. And so a school that's partially online, but that meets, you know, one or two times a week would be a great option. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Carly Umuru. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Carly Umuru. I am the parent of two students at Fairmont and one student at Korematsu. I'm also a third grade teacher at Fairmont and West Contra Costa alumni. Been working for the district for more than twenty-five years. I first want to say how appreciative I am of the Fairmont staff and our principal Heather Best. Good leadership is critical to an effective school. That being said, good leadership is also critical to an effective school district, and I'm disappointed at the leadership that has been exhibited this school year. Collapsing classrooms and involuntary transfers is a joke and shows that the district has very little, if any, respect for the teachers. The staff and our students. This suggestion needs to be put in the trash can. As we tell our students to do with hurtful and unkind comments during our SEL lessons. I'm asking for students and staff to be mandated to be tested and vaccinated. The students need K ninety-five masks. There needs to be better contact tracing and we need to move classes to quarantine with breakouts. Be transparent. Keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Kumie Yanagi Hara. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, Board Superintendent Hurson, fellow district community members, and thank you to trustee Smith Folds for assisting to extend the time. My name is Kumie Yanagi Hara and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. And you may have heard earlier from Ms. Taylor what happened at our site on Tuesday when students were made to sit outdoors for over two hours. After finding the need to sanitize many classrooms. My room was one of them, but as far as I know, there has been no contact tracing done. But also I want to share that the next day I asked every one of my classes, in an ideal world, what do we come to school to do? And every single class, which by the way has only been getting about a fifty percent attendance rate due to students staying home sick with COVID. Or being kept at home due to fear of getting sick, replied resoundingly with to learn. Then I asked, was any learning happening at school yesterday after lunch? To which they answered, no. While we were out there, some students asked me, why are we still here? And I honestly didn't know what to tell them. In an ideal world, students come to school to learn and to grow and to thrive. And yet, because of the rapid rise in COVID cases, none of this is happening. I don't want to go to online instruction, but I also don't want my students, my colleagues and our community to get sick. The way things are now does not keep any of us safe and does not allow students to properly learn. Please consider a temporary switch to virtual instruction to protect our community's health during this time. Or at the very least, provide KN ninety-five masks for teachers and students, push for mandatory testing and a vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Daniel. Please state your last name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Daniel Cervantes. I'm a teacher at Richmond High School. I'm also a alum from the district. I've been going to work these past few weeks when we came back from winter break. The first week back was tough. A lot of. Students coming back with COVID, teachers calling out sick. This last week in particular now, I think we've had about ninety-one students test positive, right? It's a strain on teachers, it's a strain on students, right? There's not enough adequate testing. I got tested on Monday at the district office. I made an appointment and the line was around the whole block. Right? So there needs to be more adequate testing. I understand that students thrive in person, right? But at this point, you know, I have classes this week with less than fifty percent of my students, right? So they have nobody to collaborate with, right? There's not enough students in class to collaborate with, so I recommend closing schools down, going to distance learning for about three weeks. That's how long it's been since this rise has started, so. I hope you all listen to the teachers, listen to the parents and listen to the community.
Our next public speaker is Idrissa Ladiar-Lekier. Please unmute yourself.
Oh, good evening. You go, Cassandra. Good evening, Board. This is Idrissa again. I'm a parent, community leader and double ACP member, alumni of the district, as well as the president of Bright Futures. I am so displeased at how you all have handled this new COVID crisis. Your protocols are all about the money to stay open and not about the safety of our children. The staff or the community. My son is in the fifth grade. There was a case of COVID in his class and there are only three parents that were notified. Do you think that student didn't walk around the classroom or expose any other students along the way? That is ridiculous and unacceptable. The whole class should be informed. You're more concerned with politics and money and not the safety of the students and the teachers. There's so many other school districts and teachers that are closed for a few weeks, but we're still putting our kids and staff at risk. When the pandemic first started, Bright Futures was the first hub open to house our kids while they learned online. We were successful in keeping our kids safe and had zero outbreaks. Yet as of now, we still don't even have our contract. There are all these programs with contracts contacting us because they don't have students, yet we have students and have proven for over twenty-six years. But we still don't have a contract. You need to stop this political BS. It's disheartening. Take care of the kids. Make it about their safety because parents are taking their kids out of this district left and right, and you need to make better decisions.
Conclude your comment. Thank you. Our next public speaker is Stacy. Please state your last name for the record.
Hello, it's Campbell, Stacy Campbell. I support and agree with the vaccine mandate. Oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say that I have two kids in the district. I think we need testing mandates for all students and staff. I completely don't agree with collapsing classes and transferring teachers. It will disrupt the school communities and the last remaining safety the students and staff may feel. I don't want distance learning for the rest of the school year, but the current state of COVID is terrible and learning is being disrupted even with the kids. At school. Kids are sitting in cafeterias or outside, look at Kennedy, and many kids are out on quarantine. I think it would be helpful to do distance learning for a few weeks to try to write out the surge. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is David Module. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. My name is David Mudgill. I have a student at Pinole Valley High. I'm totally against the vaccine mandates. As we see, ninety-eight percent of the people out at work are vaccinated and boosted. It's not working. It's not made to work for this variant. This variant is mild. It's almost like they should have a chicken pox party and just get it over with. If therapies are used correctly and meds to prevent it. It would get over faster, but the district failed to see the writing on the wall with people going away for vacations. And catching COVID and bringing it back. There should have been a pause for about three weeks before students went back to school. Just so all this would subside. And thank you, President Smith Folds, for honoring the bylaws, knowing them. And following the process. The rest of you did immenseable. Harm, just like January sixth. It was an insurrection or a coup.
Please conclude your comment. Our next public speaker is DeeDee. Please state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Deanna Dunn. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here are my comments. So first I have a question about close contact within fifteen minutes. How far apart should students be? Before they're considered close contact? Is there procedure for students to be three feet apart, including masks? Why are students not receiving Plexiglas around their classroom, their desk if they're not supposed to be three feet apart? Classrooms are not being effectively clean, wiped down hard surfaces, mopping floors. The only thing that I'm seeing is that trash is being taken out. And floors are being swept and door handles are being wiped off. And I want to thank you to Ms. Folds for answering my question about why is there not an electronical comic card that can be provided? For people who are not able to speak. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Tara Fay. Please unmute yourself.
Yes. My name is Tara Fay and I'm the music teacher at Pinole Middle and West County Mandarin, the climate coordinator, Nader and SSC and ILT member. At Pinole Middle School and above all, a disabled immunocompromised woman. How many of you board members have taught in a classroom since the pandemic began? You haven't. You don't understand that your plans don't apply to the realities of our students. If I had a nickel for every student I have had to tell to put on a mask, whose masks don't fit and keep sliding off. Or who have blatantly refused to put their mask on or put it on and taken it off as soon as I have my mask turned, I would be able to buy masks for every student in the district. People keep saying the variant is mild, that people should get it over with, but how do you think that feels to disabled people like me? How do you think it feels? For those of us who, if we catch it, will be in the hospital or worse. It is no surprise that forty-nine percent of teachers in America are considering leaving their jobs and that of that number over a third are seriously considering a permanent career change. When I accepted my contract with WCCUSD, I was under the impression you were an equal opportunity employer that would not discriminate on the basis of disability. Your words don't discriminate, but your lack of action to protect staff do.
Please conclude your comment. Our next public speaker is Alvarez. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am a grocery union worker and it's been a tough year for all of us. And we were told by our union to find a way, since we're out there on the field, taking care of customers. I think the best way for us, for us to cooperate right now is to help our teachers. There are people. Dealing with the situation. They're teaching our kids. They're teaching our future. You know, they say we need the help. We have to get together and help them. They deal with one-on-one daily basis, child after child. If they need help, we need to help them. I say let's close the school down for two weeks, clean it up, get everybody, you know, get it together. Let's clear it and then go back with reasonable. Things to do because it's getting out of hand and we do not want to close the schools down. Thank you.
Well, can I turn this on?
Our next public speaker is Jordan Daniel. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jordan Daniel and I am a student that attends Hercules High School. And just somebody attending a school, this is what I have to say. This district is always speaking about how they are doing the best to keep us safe. I don't see that being done. And one of the meetings where the reopening was being discussed, I recall, I recall hearing. There will be better ventilation and sanitation stations, which is not being provided. There's rarely any soap in the bathrooms to wash our hands. I don't feel safe and my fellow peers don't feel safe either. And most teachers aren't even at my school, so we end up being in the cafeteria or the gym. So it's just a whole bunch of bodies and not enough learning being provided. Or any learning being provided, which makes COVID spread even more and makes my peers and I feel like our health. Life and families do not matter. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Enzo Maroti. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Lorenzo Marotti. I'm a journalism teacher at Richmond High School. And I'm calling in to let you know that since January third, there've been ninety positive cases. And I'm calling in to let you know that since January 3rd, there've been 90 positive cases. But we are missing about 40% of our students, 25% of our staff. And this information was provided by our principal, Jose de Leon. Uh, we're missing about 40% of our students because most of them are just afraid to come to school, either been exposed or tested positive. And as a teacher, as a first-year teacher, actually, it's been quite difficult to try and actually teach students about journalism when half of them are not there. Um, it is also finals week, so it's been quite difficult for students to collaborate and work on stories together. But you know, if anyone who is listening in the community is interested, please reach out to me. My email is Lorenzo dot Marotti at WCCUSD dot net. Or feel free to reach out to me on my cell phone, 510-323-6680. I love to put you in connection with one of my student journalists.
Our next public speaker is Golden Randall. Please unmute yourself. Our next public speaker is Andrea Garcia Perez. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening, board. First of all, I would like to give a big shout out to Ms. Jamila Smith Folds for the continuous support that you have for our community and reaching out to us. I really appreciate that. You are amazing. And I am a special education preschool teacher. My site is Coronado Elementary. Please help our inner city schools. Coronado is struggling. There's many teachers' absence. There is no subs and they're always dividing the students to go to different classes. That is a lot of pressure for our dear teachers that are always there and also for our students. It is terrible to see them always transitioning from class to class and there isn't a sub. Our principal is subbing our classrooms. We are losing a principal because we do not have any teacher subs or any support. I am a special education preschool teacher. I have kids who have IEPs. And on Monday, coming back from the break, I did not have an aide. I only had one sub aide. We need more aides for our needy students, our special education students. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Darian. Please state your last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Darren Walker. I'm the president of Richmond High School. Where I'm at soft right now is at my school, we're going through so many things, which is, uh, we had like other students say we had 90 COVID cases at my school. We have a bunch of teachers out. And I'm like at Hercules, there is no soap in the bathroom where it's consistent thing where I have to go as president and act and make sure their safety is considered at my school, which it isn't. On a day-to-day basis, when I go to class, I only have one teacher at school. All the rest of my teachers are out and I have seven classes almost every day. Um, bunch of classes are shut into the cafeteria. The more and more cases that go every day and to the point where, well, actually, let's say this, um, I was told today by my teacher, the superintendent sent out an email, which was very disrespectful towards teachers. Well, do you know teachers every single day come to school, sit in class with students when they know that they are able to catch COVID and risk their lives and other students and teachers and their family lives? Um, other schools have no filters. There is no mask. There's bathrooms that doesn't have soap and setter. And it basically what I'm saying is I think you guys should, um, more likely think about more of the students and teachers and thinking about yourself because all you guys are caring about is the funding and not the safety of your students. I believe you guys should put a hybrid.
And our last public speaker for the night will be Randy Row. And Randy Row has lost connection. Our last speaker for the night will be Jackie Medina. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I have a student, my son, he attends Stewart Elementary and he is part of the dual immersion program. Not only have these students been failed terribly, the staff and the teachers have been failed terribly. Today, there was a student that tested positive for COVID. And instead of quarantining the rest of the little bit of the kids that are left in that class, they told the kid next to the kid that was tested positive to go home. You still think that these kids only sit in these little desks, but yet they are unsupervised. They are walking around. They're all over the place during lunchtime. And yet they told this woman to stay at work, knowing that she has two kids at home. And when there are still other students there, I mean, at this point, there has to be better guidelines and better protocol for positive outbreaks. I think that this school needs to be shut down for a few weeks so we can figure this whole situation out. I understand that there are numbers and that there are protocols and that, yeah, there are funding that, that everything needs to be considered. But at the end, it's not going to matter if our kids are sick or if the families are getting sick and we can't take them. You know, thank you for the moment, but I think we need to start doing right by our teachers and start listening to them. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank everyone who participated in public comment and we appreciate all that you have said. And now we will move on to the next agenda item. Board, we will now move on to a seven agenda review and adoption. Uh, the order of trustees, questions and comments tonight is as follows. Uh, trustee, uh, trustee Cole, trustee Trahilio, trustee Phillips, trust, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoy, trustee Reckler and trustee Smith Folds and myself. And so we will go in that order. And so in that order, are there clarifying questions at adoption of the agenda? Seeing not, may I have a motion to adopt this agenda as presented?
So moved.
Uh, second, anyone?
A second person, Christian.
Okay. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy seconded and trustee Phillips, move, motion and the motion is moved and the second, and is there any discussion? Now we will move to the vote to adopt the agenda as presented. So we'll start off with, uh, trustee, uh, Cole.
Vote yes.
Trustee Trahilio?
Trahilio, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes, sir.
Reckler, yes.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez Hoy?
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
And myself, yes. The motion, the, the, being the motion carry and now we will move.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
I put it in the chat, but the general public can't see our faces. They just see the screen that says, uh, West Contra Costa Unified School District. They can't see us.
Funny, Kate.
No, sir.
Okay, we working on that now. As we work on that, I'm gonna continue to proceed on, um, with the meeting. Uh, now we are moving on to be one, uh, discussion item. And tonight is COVID response contingency plan. And Dr. Hurst, how long do you think, uh, your presentation will last? And do you recommend that the board, uh, hear the entire presentation and then make, then ask questions? Or do you want questions, uh, and comments after each presenter or each section?
I think based on what I heard from the trustees earlier that we were going to listen to the entire presentation and then there will be a one round of five questions. Um, so that's what I believe I heard, Mr. President. Um, the presentation itself is about 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay. So, so the board presentation will last, okay? And we will now move into the presentation.
Thank you very much, President Christian. If we could bring up the presentation, please. I first like to recognize a staff who's going to be presenting, uh, the executive team. We also have county representatives here. We have Superintendent Lynn Mackey here that's going to be participating and also available to answer questions. We also have Mr. Nick Berger here from the county that's going to be participating and available to ask questions, answer questions. We also have Ms. Denise, Denise Porterfield that's available as well from the county to answer questions. So on that, if we can go to the next slide. So I first wanted to start off by thanking the many parents, community members and teachers for your comments. Um, I was listening and taking notes. I do want to share with you some of the things that I did hear from you. Uh, many of you talked about some ideas around incorporating soliciting support from parents and having parent volunteers. Uh, thank you for that. I also think signing, the governor signing the, um, the emergency order that's going to allow us to move forward and bring in substitutes and also volunteers. So thank you for sharing that. Uh, some of you mentioned increasing subpay. Uh, you talked about K N95 mask, not for just our teachers, but also for students. Thank you for sharing that with you. I heard you loud and clear. Also, there was one that talked about not just one per week for staff, but consider another option, uh, more than one per week. So thank you for sharing that. Uh, some of you mentioned also mandated testing. Uh, thank you for sharing that. Certainly under consideration. Um, also heard, um, a few of you talk about at-home test. Um, and looking into that, I appreciate you sharing that as well. I heard a few of you talk about improved cleaning protocols also. So thank you for sharing that. Uh, one of the things I heard very loud and clear is not collapsing classes and not wanting that to be an idea that's considered. I will share with you in conversations with the board, with members of the board, that those ideas are just ideas. Some we may be able to move on and some we will not. But, um, those ideas that we're going to be presenting tonight were just that ideas. So with that, I want to share with you, thank you for your, your thoughts. I will take everything under serious consideration and plan accordingly. I did want to share with you, I do appreciate, um, all the employees, our teachers as well. I do acknowledge just our central stocks, central office support that's been at our school sites on a regular basis. Also, just to fill in the gap, uh, we have a process that we have put in place where we are meeting, um, on a regular basis every day, uh, 5:00 PM. And we have our chief academic officer and our executive directors that's looking at the absence report. So whenever, um, a teacher is going to be out EO, then we look at that absence report and we meet in the morning and we go over those absence reports and then we fill in the gaps. We send people from the central office to all of the school sites, including myself. If you can go to the next slide. We also wanted to share that there's some other things that the district has put in place. And I wanted to share this with you because I do believe that our district is working hard. And not comparing to other districts, but there's some unique things that's happening in our district um, that we're doing that other districts are not doing. I did hear you loud and clear. Could we be better? Could we get better? Absolutely. But we certainly wanted to point out that our district is certainly doing some very unique things. Uh, first and foremost, we wanted to mention the vaccine mandate, uh, which we certainly believe is the best mitigation strategy and that's been shared, um, with our county office as well. And we also have our vaccine mandate for our students, our staff, all of our volunteers and all of our contractors who have contact with our students. So we are proud of that and that's something that our district is doing that many districts are not. Also, we were innovative in utilizing our smoke days. We had three smoke days. A smoke day is a designated day that we have on our calendar when we have poor air quality. And whenever we have a poor air quality that, um, makes us miss a day, then we have these smoke days in the calendar where we can attend school on those days to make up for that poor air quality day. We took two smoke days, one that was designated for April the 1st. The other was designated as, um, May the 22nd and we switched those days. So in fact, when we took those two days, one on a Friday and one on a Monday, we did not lose instructional days. We still have 180 instructional days. We just flip-flop those days. And it allowed us to reset and just rethink and for the district leadership to really get together and plan and think about ideas moving forward. We also wanted to share what's unique for our district that we are proud that we're doing is the testing centers that we have. Um, and those testing centers are in place every day throughout the week, so five days per week. We also are one of the few districts, um, in the area and probably in the state where we have a school site testing program. And that's for our weekly testing. We also just recently announced the K N95 mask for all of our staff. And those are mandated. I heard you loud and clear about not just one per week, but looking at increasing that amount. So thank you for sharing that. Also, um, we wanted to just point out that we're providing all of our students surgical masks. And that's effective January the 17th. And I did hear you loud and clear as well about looking into the possibility of K N95 mask for students. One of the more unique pieces that we have in place in our district is their internal contact tracing at the district level. Been able to acquire 11 nurses as part of our contact tracing team, which is different from most districts, which really collaborate with the county. So ours is more personalized and streamlined and our results are faster compared to some other districts. So we wanted to point that out. And then also what's unique about WCCUSD is we have a project manager as well that's working as part of our contact tracing team who directly reports daily cases to our union leaders. So we wanted to start off by sharing that we are, um, sending out all of our staff to school sites to support, um, the school sites as much as possible and learning as well. But also wanted to share that there are some unique things that's happening in our district that we're doing, that we are that we're doing that we are proud of. And as I said, I have heard all of you loud and clear and I really thank you for your feedback. And if we can go to our next slide. We're going to ask Mr. Booker to speak to this and then we'll have someone from the county as well to weigh in on this slide as also.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, esteemed board. When we talk about classroom closures, we are, there are certain factors that we have to determine before we can even consider closing a classroom or a school. The first thing that we have to consider is the mitigation strategy, which is a masking ventilation as well as hand cleaning, although distancing is no longer required. We do look at the distancing in the classroom. We also look at our contact tracing process and looking at who is considered a close contact. And then we look at vaccination status within that that classroom. If there are outbreaks or people that have tested positive in that classroom. And then we also consider staffing shortages. The ultimate decision is made by the superintendent and that's in collaboration with the county, Contra Costa County Health Department. The superintendent takes this all into consideration when either considering closing a classroom or closing a school. Our objective is to keep not only classrooms open, but to keep schools open as well. And I just want to read a a letter that I received from the county, Dr. McCurry. And it's a quote and it was approved by Dr. Savelli. "We have seen throughout this pandemic that keeping schools and classrooms open isn't important for student learning, emotional well-being and mental health and can be done with all preservative measures in place." Or prevented, I'm sorry, preventative measures in place. From the public health perspective, there are very few reasons to close schools or classrooms and classrooms with many positive students can remain open as long as they have students who can return to school, i.e. students who are not positive from COVID nineteen in isolation or symptomatic students. Students can continue to remain in school after exposures, even if there are multiple cases in classrooms. If they don't have symptoms and continue to follow guidance set forth by the state regarding testing after contacts. In addition to all the proven preventative layers that include vaccination booster shots for eligible people, masking, hand washing and staying at home when sick. And like I said, this is from Dr. McCurry from the Contra Costa County Public Health Department. Next slide, please.
Before we go on to this next slide about the J thirteen alpha, I wanted to see if there was someone from the county that wanted to add to the classroom or school closure.
Sure. Hi, everybody. This is Lynn Mackey. I'm the county superintendent. Good evening, board. Good evening, Superintendent Hurst. Good evening, community. I do want to say unfortunately, our deputy health officer who was with us had to drop off the call, so she won't be here to address some of these, but I do want you to know to be aware that the health guidance has been updated within the last twenty-four hours. So some of the even when the public was speaking, there were some things that they were hoping would be updated that has been updated in the last twenty-four hours. So be looking for that as well as just some of the other comments that were made. I know that your district and your superintendent and your Mr. Booker, your lead on COVID has been working very closely with the health department on, working with the state on. Dr. Hurst is in our meetings with our county health officer on a regular basis and also Mr. Booker is gets the information from the state health team. You have been part of the testing, the testing program where we were able to distribute the single tests out to homes and we're hoping that the state is going to do another push of those. And some of the comments from the public, which were all really well taken and I really appreciated hearing them even from my perspective. So I know what to continue to push the state on. Our governor and our superintendent has been really clear about wanting to keep schools open. So they have set up some things in place to kind of poke and make it, you know, really make it so we have to work through every single opportunity to keep schools open before we can discuss closing them down, either whether it's for health or for staffing shortages. So I know Mr. Booker was about to jump into the J thirteen, which that will be part of it. And I I agree and I know Dr. Hurst agrees that this isn't at all all about money. Even the J thirteen isn't about money, but as we're planning and as we're looking forward, we do need to make sure we know what is what is required of the state. So this is the opportunity. There's been new guidelines for the J thirteen, J thirteens, and that's what you usually file for when you close a class for any reason. So there's just been some new updates just as of January. So we want to make sure this board's really clear on what those requirements now are because they are new requirements. And then unfortunately, the health department couldn't continue to be on the call to update you on the new K twelve health guidelines, but I'm sure you'll be getting that information shortly. I mean, I know you have it all, but you'll be getting it out to the community shortly.
Thank you, Superintendent Hack Mackey. We're going to go to the next slide. The next one, we're going to ask Mr. Robert McIntyre to present on that one, please.
Hello, trustees. It's an honor to be with you again tonight. I I heard Superintendent Mackey talk about the fact that the J thirteen is not so much about money, but it's really a recognition that when when we have operational circumstances that impact our ability to deliver instruction to the the number of students we expect on a given day, that there's, you know, we still have the obligation to maintain all the systems of support, even though those students couldn't be there that day. And so the state provides kind of a lifeline or a waiver in the form of the J thirteen A. And really, it's designed primarily to help address the loss in attendance and instructional time as a result of really extraordinary conditions. And and so, you know, when you look at the law around extraordinary conditions, it talks about fire, flood and earthquake and and certainly, you know, twenty-four months ago, we included COVID in that list. But now that there's this expectation that if a student has exposure that they would immediately go to independent study, COVID was taken off the list as far as students having to losing student attendance because they had to go home or go on independent study because the expectation is we would get them their packets, they would do the work, we'd get the time value of that attendance and there'd be no loss, no learning loss, no operational loss. But there's been some recent changes that have kind of narrowed the availability of our ability to file a J thirteen. And we wanted to talk, just kind of inform you what some of those were tonight. So for this year only, from September first to June thirtieth, we cannot use the J thirteen A for attendance based funding if the school closure was due to the impact of COVID nineteen. So of course, we could still do it if we had to close because we didn't have water or we had a flood flood or fire earthquake, we could still claim then, but not for the loss of attendance due to COVID nineteen. But there are a couple of exceptions to this and and we've had some conversations tonight around some of them. So for example, if we have learning loss or attendance loss due to students with I E Ps, if you have an individualized education plan, I mean, special education and we can't deliver your program through independent study, then we can, we can file and claim for that lost attendance. Because the staff that's associated with those students tied to the I E P still had to be maintained by the district. Also, well, we don't, we're not going to worry about community day schools, but looking at that last bullet, this is a very relevant one for us over the last two weeks. School closure necessitated by a COVID nineteen related staff shortage. And and I don't believe that's just school closure. That would apply to a class closure. So if we cannot provide an adequate level of staffing to create a safe environment for our students, and I think that's part of where the conversation around the idea of collapsing classes and sending central office administrators has come from is is really maintain that level of safety. You know, the whole Maslow's hierarchy of needs, nobody's going to learn if they don't have a safe environment, right? And so I think that's the legislative intent around the idea that we can claim the J thirteen waiver if you have to close a class or school due to staffing shortage. Because that does not allow the students to immediately flip an independent study. Next slide, please. Oh. Hit the back button. There we go. So what, as we look at the event of the idea around closures, we have to look at, are we able to provide in order to make a claim? In the event that we have to make a claim due to severe staffing shortages, we can do it under the following conditions. There's a procedure laid out by the state for us to file this claim. So we have to be unable to provide in-person instruction due to staffing shortages as a result of staff quarantine due to COVID nineteen. So that's, that's the staff calling and saying, I can't come in, whether it be a positive test or through our our facilities or on their own. They know they're sick. They know it's code related. They can't come in. Check. We we know who those people are. They're in our attendance system. We've exhausted all options for obtaining staff coverage. This is the call in the county saying, hey, do you have anybody making sure every available sub has been contacted? Keeping in mind, we're competing with all of our neighboring districts for subs and there's a shortage statewide of credentialed subs. So hopefully have allowing retirees to come back will be a real big positive from the most recent executive order. But for now, we're all fighting this shortage. Then finally, did we consult with the county office of education and the state superintendent of public instruction before saying we've we've met all the requirements? And so if we've done these three things, if these three conditions exist, then we can file the J thirteen A waiver for the class closure or the school closure. When we file the waiver, we have to include our plan to offer independent study to all students that were impacted within ten days of the first day of that closure. So it's balancing the operational reality of what we can do, what students can convert into versus what they can't when staff is not available to help them with that. So in lieu of filing the the J thirteen A, lost attendance would be claimed through the independent study. So those those work packets the students are completing and turning in. And if they don't, then that attendance is effectively lost. And so what does that mean? Once again, money is not the most important factor, but you're looking at about seventy dollars per student per day across the entire district. And and so that adds up quickly and you still have to pay every staff member who's on contract for the period, whether that student showed up or that revenue is generated or not. And so with that, I think we're going to talk a little bit about the claiming the ADA next.
Good evening, board, parents, staff and community. I am going to talk. Thank you, Robert. I am going to talk a little bit about independent study law. So current law does not allow for schools to offer distance learning this year. That sun set it with A B one thirty as Superintendent Lynn Mackey previously mentioned. So virtual learning can only be offered through independent study and families must choose to participate in the program. So students cannot be placed in independent study without parents signing a contract. L E As must obtain an independent study agreement for all students participating in the program. And you have, L E As have up to thirty days after the commencement of independent study to obtain the agreement. Also linked here for the board, the C D E website on independent study. Despite the COVID nineteen surge California is experiencing, and I want to acknowledge that our teachers, our staff, our community, we are definitely experiencing this surge, not only at school sites, but at central office as well. And the absence of a state or local health order, L E As do not have the explicit authority to shift to virtual learning outside of the independent study statute. If L E A, if an L E A does decide to close completely, existing law does not allow an L E A to utilize, does allow an L E A to utilize built-in days, smoke, snowed, snow or smoke days to shut down if they are included in collective bargaining agreements, which is what you saw recently with closing and using our two smoke days. This option allows an L E A to close completely without using the independent study program and make up those days later in the year. For us, because they were built into the calendar, we do not have to make those up this year. As long as a hundred and eighty day school year is maintained, there will be no negative impact on ADA. However, as Mr. McIntyre named before, if in fact we close, we actually will have the loss in ADA. Next slide.
And before we go to the contingency plan, I just wanted to pause for a second to see if anyone from the county wanted to add to the conversation for the J thirteen alpha or independent study law.
So good evening. I'm Denise Porterfield, Deputy Superintendent of Business at the County Office of Education. And I do want to say that board, your staff has provided you with a very thorough explanation of combining these two requirements in filing for instructional minute waivers and or ADA waivers or using the independent study program. The one thing I did want to add about the J thirteen A is the process does require the collaboration with the superintendent of schools at the county level and the superintendent of schools at the state level through their staff to ensure that what is happening is approvable in the end. The superintendent of the county office has only the authority to substantiate the documentation of what occurred. It is the state that will do the final determination. And so that's why you want all of this put together to ensure that if you aren't needing the hundred and eighty day or the minimum instructional minutes, you can get that waiver and or still claim ADA through the independent study to fund your district to continue serving your students. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, I, um, my name is Nick Berger and I'm one of the directors in the county office of education. I would and good evening, board and superintendent and staff and community. I just wanted to add, I think that was a very comprehensive description of the independent study situation. And I appreciate how that was emphasized in tonight's presentation because it really is a big piece of how to, you know, keep, keep the students learning while we're in these tricky situations and while students are home during quarantine. And I do just want to emphasize, I think really the only thing I wanted to add was just the importance of in the when a student is, does choose or the family chooses to have a student go on independent study as a decision that is one of the options that families have through A B one thirty. And with this, with A B one thirty, the mandates really do require that students and families understand that there's an option for in-person instruction in addition to the option for independent study. So that's one of the things that districts are challenged with when we look at what distance learning was and how it transfers over to what we now have as independent study. But besides that, I think Associate Superintendent Martin gave a a really good description of independent study. And after the presentation, if there's anything I can do to help with questions, I'm happy to do that. But again, thank you for having me tonight to be part of this discussion. But again, thank you for having me tonight to be part of this discussion.
Ms. Martin, we cannot. Sorry, trustee Hoy. So I'm going to continue with our contingency plan and just some thinking. I do want to acknowledge, um, all the teachers, um, staff, um, and parents that we heard, I do want to acknowledge, um, that we hear you. I do want to also name that this was thinking on the part of cabinet, these are in no way set in stone. But an opportunity to provide discussion with the board. Um, and then once the board decides on a direction, then we will definitely engage further with our teachers and our community. But none of these are set in stone, these are only options to help us get through this surge and our teacher shortage. With that being said, for option number one, um, the teacher absences, as Dr. Hirsch named. We have really been focusing on sending central to support, um, at schools. We've created a new tracker in which we're really trying to send support based on the area and the ED. Um, it's taken a huge toll, not only on teachers, but also on central staff as well. Um, and so this is something that we committed to doing. Um, as Ms. Chamberlain named earlier, even classified staff have been asked to go out to school sites and support. So that is something that we are committed to doing because we really believe in keeping schools open. Um, for option two, um, teacher absences as Mr. McIntyre name. Another option is to file J thirteen A's. However, as the county has named, that cannot be done, there are multiple factors that go into a J thirteen. And the decision can only be made with the superintendent, county and state to file a J thirteen. So this is something we also talked about in cabinet as well. For option number three, which was clearly a very contentious option. And we do want to acknowledge that we've heard teachers name that there are classrooms that are vacant, that teachers are period subbing. That teachers are taking additional students. Um, there were vacancies before the school year, even when the school year started and those vacancies, many of those vacancies have continued. When we look at our enrollment as a district, our enrollment is actually lower than what we originally projected. And we also, our class size averages are a lot smaller in many of the classrooms. So with that being said, we talked about an involuntary process, transfer process and consolidation of classes. For an emergency purpose and for the safety of our students. We have many teachers who are period subbing and taking other students, so this would be a temporary solution for safety. And to allow more staff to be available at a school site to support when there are absences or vacancies at a school. However, I do want to just reiterate that this is a temporary option, not a permanent option. This is something merely to get us through the surge. Um, and to support our students so that we have a safe learning environment, um, for all of our students and that our staff is not burned out. Next slide. I am going to let, um, Mr. Booker talk about option one, but when we think about COVID cases and the surge in COVID cases. Um, this is really just reiterating the reason or why, I know there's been a lot of questions around when. We close classrooms, when we can close a school. And so we did talk through this, and although there is not a set number. Um, that we wanted to really specifically put on the slide, I will let Mr. Booker talk through option one and all the steps that would go into. Um, a discussion before closing a school or before closing a classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So when you look at closing a classroom and our school, there are things that you have to look at. And although we hear the number three, there is no determined number for, uh, closing a classroom. Three signifies that there is a potential outbreak. Um, but having an outbreak just means that we have a reporting requirement to. To the county. Um, so they can collaborate with us with regard to what we do with that class and our school. One of the things that we also look at is the multiple positive cases that cannot, cannot be contact traced in school. Um, but like I said, um, we are working hand in hand with the county when this occurs. Uh, and then finally, we, we look at also, uh, movement of the positive cases, if it, if it is contained. Uh, in a certain area or if it can't be contained within that school. Um, but there is no number that is decided on if a school is closed. Ultimately, it comes down to the superintendent gathering all this information and working with the county health department. To decide on if a classroom and or school is closing. But we do, we do take safety very, very seriously in terms of making sure that people are safe. So we ask that, um, our teachers, uh, and staff. Maintain their mitigation strategies at all time. Um, we do, uh, require cleaning for any, uh, class that has, has had a positive case in our exposures. Um, and we also, uh, look at what we can do. Uh, not only from the district, but what we can do from the site that can help them ease, uh, some of the, the, the burdens of. Of people being quarantined and things of those nature. Uh, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Another option we discussed, um, was room and zoom, I did hear some students mention that they really wanted the opportunity. To continue with their learning if they are quarantining. Um, the best way for that to happen is if there's an opportunity for a hybrid model or for students to do some sort of room and zoom. However, there are several implications even with this, which include the purchase of technology. An MOU in agreement with our union, um, and then also an independent study contract. Because students would still be on independent study, even if they are rooming and zooming and you're still have to abide by the ten day. Maximum of independent studies, so it doesn't mean that you can room and zoom forever, you're still only able to room and zoom. For the maximum of the ten days that the law allows. The next one, um, is modified quarantine, which we went back and forth on this. The, the purpose of modified quarantine would be to allow students to still stay in school. If they are in close contact. With another student or staff member who tested positive, currently we do not do modify quarantine. Because of the manpower of modified quarantine. Um, and I will let Mr. Booker speak more to this, um, but we did want to provide it as an option for the board's consideration.
Like Ms. Martin said, it, it is a, a consideration that we, we, uh, have looked at. Um, and it is a recommendation that the county health gives. Uh, so that students can stay in school if they are considered close contact. However, uh, like I said, uh, meeting meetings ago, we just don't have the capacity for a few different reasons. Uh, number one is that we test at our sites weekly and that's every site, every school site that we have, we test on a weekly basis. Which requires a certain amount of, amount of men or people power for, uh, those sites. And then we, we added those additional sites, so the three sites, uh, that, um, we. Have opened for five days a week, uh, eight hours a day, uh, requires people power. And so LSA just does not have the capacity to do that. Uh, and then to do modify quarantine, they do have other school districts, uh, throughout the state that they service. Um, if we were not doing a weekly, uh, testing out of sites, that would be a serious consideration. Um, but we just don't have the, uh, capacity. Uh, and then the thing is, is if we bring in another company, there's another registration process. Uh, that could be problematic for families that are grappling with the, the, uh, current. Registration process, so, uh, although we are considering it and, um, are still considering it. At this time, it's just not feasible to do modify quarantine. In our district with the amount of testing that we currently do. Ms. Martin.
Next slide. Think we're at the end, Dr. Hurst.
President Christian, that concludes our presentation. We're now open for questions and the questions can be directed through the staff or personnel from the county.
All right, thank you, thank you, uh, Dr. Hurst, and thank you, uh, staff. Uh, we'll turn to questions, uh, from the board. And once again, tonight's order. We start off with trustee Cole and trustee Tri, Helio, and, and we'll work our way on down to trustee Phillips. Trustee goes, zealous heart clerk and trustee Reckler and trustee Smith Folds. All right. Start with trustee Cole.
So my first, I'm sorry, um, so my first question would be, have any of our county health officials that are advocating for in-person learning? Visited any school sites in this district and or interviewed and surveyed students to understand what our learning environment is like?
Can you say the first part of your question again, trustee Cole?
Have any of our county health officials that are advocating for in-person learning visited any school sites in this district?
What, what officials are you talking about, county officials?
Yeah, any of our county health officials that are advocating for in-person learning.
Okay.
So none of the county's health officials were able to stay on the call. So I can find out, I can, um, email her, she said to email her any questions that come up for county health.
But is anyone, I mean, Dr. Hurst, do you know if they have?
Not to, um, our school sites, no.
And from our previous board meeting discussing the vaccine mandate where trustee Smithfold recommended a testing mandate. Has there been an update on whether or not it is possible to mandate testing for people under the age of eighteen? Because I remember the CDC website said it was illegal or unethical.
Yeah, I've actually engaged in that conversation, uh, with one of our attorneys. And we know that LA USD, LA Unified is doing, uh, the testing mandate. I think that's one of the things I'm still trying to get clarity on, which I said, um, earlier. That's something I could certainly continue to investigate and it could be a possibility. I think also in some of my correspondence to individuals. Said part of this is going to be the capacity of LSA and whether they could handle the capacity of the additional testing. So just a couple of components, but it's something that's certainly on my list.
And, um, for clarification, how many positive COVID results are needed in order to shut down a school site? Because I think that before when we had discussed, um, it was fifteen positive COVID results.
That is old, old guidance, so there is no number, um, of cases that, uh, would. Cause a school to be closed.
Um, is there any instruction from the district or any protection being provided for students that are missing out? Um, like while they're quarantining?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question again?
Um, is the district, um, protecting students regarding their attendance if they have like a lot of, um, absences?
I can, I can answer that, um, COVID absences for students are considered excused absences. Um, and we are currently, um, working on. Looking at allowing students to continue to turn and work as the semester is ending. Um, so we're gonna, we actually have a memo going out now to actually extend the deadline. So teachers can ensure that students are able to turn in any missing work to also complete any finals. Um, and so that memo will be going out tomorrow. And we're also doing the same thing for, uh, assessment, the assessment calendar as well.
And just for clarification, um, I wanted to ask. Why does LSA testing have certain sites only dedicated to a certain school site, students and staff members? Shouldn't these testing sites be available to everyone in the district in order to prevent overwhelmed public testing sites?
Let me make sure I understand your question, so you're saying that certain sites. Uh, only have testing for staff and, uh, students at that school.
At least, um, when I was scheduling a COVID test on global virus pass, um, I saw that a lot of school sites only had. Like Dejean Middle School, um, staff slash students only could schedule an appointment for that site. So I was just asking, like, why is that the case?
So if you're looking at a school site, the reason why it's for staff and students is because of our contact tracing. If there is a, a positive case on that campus, we want to make sure that we can properly contact trace it. So we opened the additional sites, which we opened for staff, students and parents. Uh, so those three sites that we have, have the ability to test. Staff, students and parents, uh, and that is either a PCR test or a rapid test.
And then just my last question, um, is the district going to send at-home tests to every family in the district like other districts have?
I believe Superintendent Mackey said that, that, that is an option, we are reliant on the county for, um, resources like that. And, um, she can probably answer that better than I can.
But we did do a distribution of, um, about twenty-eight thousand test kits to West County. But that was a one-time thing over break, we were waiting for the state to see if they can continue that. Right now, there's, there's kind of a shortage of tests in the state because there's such a, um, a demand for them. As soon as the state sends them, we'll send them right out.
Thank you, that is all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we got trustee Trillo.
Thank you, um, my first question would be, um, I believe for Dr. Hurst. Uh, was the involuntary, uh, tran, teacher transfer in collapsing of classrooms, um, option discussed with teachers and the UTR? At, um, the, the Monday meeting with teachers.
No, I didn't bring any of those, uh, ideas to. Um, the teachers, I typically don't do that before I speak to the board. I had not spoken to the entire board about that, I spoke to two board members about that. But just as, um, Ms. Martin had shared, those are all ideas that we have to consider as a district. I'm not sure if those ideas are going to go anywhere, but those are ideas that we have to talk about.
Thank you, and then, um, my next question would be, um. If, if the county says we can send, uh, kids to school who've been exposed to COVID, then why are schools sending kids home who have been exposed to COVID?
So, I mean, each case is different. Um, we just got new guidance as of yesterday. Um, so, um, we had to redo a lot of our, our, our guidance for the district. Um, so, uh, we will be moving forward with, uh, the recommendations that the county put forth, uh, in CDPH. Um, but like I said, each case, uh, is different at each site.
Thank you, um, my next question would be, um. Why and when did the fifteen cases to close down guideline change?
Uh, it's, it's been, um, I, I can get you the exact date, um, but it's been a little bit of time.
And what was the reason for, for the change?
Uh, that's something that only the CDPH can answer or the county health.
Okay, are any county health, um, people here who could answer that? Or was it the day left the meeting or?
The doctor had to leave the meeting early from the county.
Is, is there any way I could get an answer to that?
Yeah, I, I can check in with, uh, Super D and Mackey to get to the county.
Okay, thank you, and then, um. Uh, my three questions are. I think that was three, um, and then my next question would be, um. Well, why is there no, um. Actually, no, yeah, why is there no option just, um, to just be able to switch to? Actually, yeah, why is there no option just to just be able to switch to? Do we need these options like the J thirteen A in order to switch? Like it's needed in order to switch to hybrid remote learning? Or is there any other option? Cause I heard that other districts like Hayward, I believe, switched to remote learning.
So Denise Porterfield, again, I think I can answer that for you. The state had authorized distance learning or remote learning last year, but it's not authorized this year as an option for delivery of education. You can use the technology while doing independent study to either claim the instructional minutes if you take money out of the equation. Just getting to the minimum instructional minutes of the count that your district would have to provide to students.
Thank you. And my, my last question for now would be, should students who are fully vaccinated and knowingly exposed to COVID return to school the next day?
So if, if a student or staff is fully vaccinated and they have been exposed, as long as they are not symptomatic, they can return to school the next day. But there is a recommendation that they test within three to five days of that exposure.
Thank you. Those are all of my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. Next we are moved to trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much, President Christian. I have five questions and all of these questions are for Dr. Hurst. Question, and Dr. Hurst, you can answer these questions as short or as lengthy as you choose. The first question, is COVID response an operational issue?
Yes, it is.
Second question, who has authority over operational issues in this school district?
Superintendent.
Third question, is this school district doing more than surrounding school districts?
Yes, I shared that in my slides in the beginning.
Fourth question, if people have good ideas, will you consider them?
Absolutely. I shared that as well. I was taking notes throughout the public comment. And I shared that I would be taking all these concerns and ideas back to my team.
Fifth question. The board voted to reopen schools one hundred percent in person. Will you let the board know what you decide subject to that vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move to trustee Zealous Hoard.
Thank you, President Christian. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. And good evening, Superintendent Mackey, and thank you for you and your staff for being here. My first question is for Mr. Booker. Mr. Booker, under what circumstances? Could you maybe explain it a little simpler? Under what circumstances would we close a classroom? Could you maybe give us an example?
So, like I said, the superintendent is ultimately responsible for or makes the determination on if a classroom in our school is closing. But some of the things that would, would take on heavy consideration was if the mitigation strategies failed within the classroom. So if people weren't properly masked or weren't masked at all, there was no proper ventilation. And they were, you know, proper hygiene, meaning that their proper cleaning was not in, in effect. But even then, if someone was vaccinated, that would be a consideration for keeping the classroom open. So vaccination status also plays in, into that determination. But ultimately, like I said, the superintendent, through collaboration with the county health, makes the decision on if that classroom or school is going to be closed.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. This next question is probably for you or for Superintendent Mackey. When do we isolate students and our staff versus quarantining them under the new guidelines?
Mr. Booker, you want me to answer?
Yes, go right ahead.
Isolation is when you actually are positive. Quarantining is when you've been in contact. That's the distinction.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So going a little bit further on that, Superintendent Mackey, you mentioned that there were new guidelines that came out yesterday, especially around quarantining and close contacts. Would you maybe let us know how would the changes affect us directly? And I believe that part of the guidelines is that each district has to choose between two options. What are those options and have we chosen as a district an option for the new guidelines?
So, and I, I put the guidelines, I don't know if it can open, I put it in the chat just for, because I don't know if it's been shared and then the board can, the board clerk could post them if necessary. So it's the new guidelines. What it does is, and I don't have them to read, it's probably best to, Mr. Booker, if you have them in some kind of just readable format, it's probably easier just to read them and go off the top of my head. But you wouldn't have to choose like a district way, you have to do this one or this one. It can be, in this case, or in this school, this, this strategy will work better. Or in this case, in this school, this strategy would work better as far as there, there's like two option. One is like a general classroom notification where you just say to the entire class, hey, there's been a contact. Consider yourself all exposed. You can all continue coming to school still. You still have to bring your mask. You've just had an exposure. You can all come back to school. But you, you should test on day three and five. And then the other one is to try to contact trace. Did I get that right, Mr. Booker? I mean, it's so new that we, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that is correct. And, and there's, you know, there's additional, because you have to consider, like I said, vaccination status. And, you know, the mitigation in, in that classroom. But she is correct in what she just said.
Okay, thank you so much both for that. My next question is for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, the schools with the highest number of COVID cases and enlarged numbers of staff exposures and quarantines, how are we directly supporting those schools right now? For example, some of the schools like Sawskins and Cormats and others. How are we supporting them? I know you mentioned a bunch of options, right, that we want to consider and you're considering with your team to continue to support the schools. But how are we doing it at the moment?
Yeah, so the, the schools with the highest rates of absences. So that's the, the, our main strategy is what I was sharing. And also Ms. Martin was sharing where we are looking at the absence report. We also looked at the total number of staff that we have available at the central office. I think we came up with a little over thirty-five that we could push out to schools. But also lately, we started looking at not just the central office, but all departments. Understanding that some in other departments could even work as yard supervisors. So our approach has been just exactly what I said. The EDs and the CAO meeting in the evening and then we meet in the morning, every morning at seven-thirty. Looking at the absence, absence report, we have a tracker that's been developed as well, which really has all of our schools by ED area, executive director area. And then we look at the absence report, we highlight in red those schools are a high priority and we make the decisions first thing in the morning to send out all of our staff from the central office. So that's how we've been supporting at the moment.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst, for walking us through that. My last question is probably for Mr. Booker, but it's about something you said, Dr. Hurst, in your presentation around one of the biggest mitigation strategies to stop the surge is to continue to vaccinate our community. So, Mr. Booker, are we still incre- providing our vaccine clinics at the sites? And have we considered increasing them?
So we are working with the county on that. We have to make a request to the county to get those vaccination clinics. And I know that there was a, a lull in getting those requests. And actually, I think Ms. Martin can speak on it a little bit more.
Sorry, Mr. Booker, could you repeat that?
He was talking about the, the vaccination clinics. And I told him that we are still looking at having those. And moving forward with those, there were just a lull in, in the request in terms of getting them to our schools.
I will work with the safety department, that the vaccine clinic has been turned over to other members of the safety department. I do know that they were working with the county to schedule those at our elementary schools. And what they stated was, was that they wanted to wait until after the new year to schedule more. There were two that happened in the beginning of January, but I do not believe there are any scheduled currently. But I will provide an update on that to the board.
I also just want to note that in our last, the health officer said the reason there's a little pause, like if you put in your request, is because they had to shift to, to go do the vaccinations at the skilled nursing and the senior centers because that is where the death rate is happening.
Thank you so much to all of you. President Christian, that was my fifth question. The rest have come.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Next we have moved to trustee Reckler.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the superintendent and staff for the presentation and I'd like to thank the county but, the county office of education for coming. It's nice to see you all again. My first question, I believe, is for Mr. Booker. And that is, can you quantify how much COVID spread we have in schools?
Well, I have the numbers. We are still finalizing reports. But we have had an increase since we've come back from the break. So in terms of a number, I just can't give you a, a number right now for each site. But we've had, we've, we have shown an increase in positive case, positive cases that are on site.
But, but not positive cases that are on site because I understand that it's in the community. But has it spread? We, we, do we have spread in school?
Most of our cases are from community spread. So we have not found any linkage that is significant within our schools since we've been back.
Okay, thank you. And I want to apologize to everybody. I'm having a horrendous time hearing tonight. So I, I apologize. The next question I would like to ask is about, if you could repeat again or go just a little bit more in depth into what a staff shortage is under J thirteen A, like how is that quantified? And i- is there anything more specific in the law, the number of people perhaps at the site? Or how, how does that get proven?
Perhaps I can jump in here. Typically, the, the, the J thirteen A application to support a waiver request due to lack of sufficient staff. We would, we would show the course, we, course loading for the day. So the number of students in attendance, the number of adults on site, the number of certificated adults on site. So you, do we have the ability to demonstrate that we can deliver the instructional program in all of our classes? And, and we've, we've, as you heard, I, I don't know if I'd say heroic measures because I think every one of our teachers and classified staff alike have, have given heroic measures. But it, you know, where we've had massive shortages, that we've done the best we can to move staff around and, and make that up. But where we can't, in the few instances where we have had to shut a class down, we are filing those waivers and those will come for, for the board's review.
Okay, thank you. Next is, would somebody be able to repeat again what Hayward is doing? And are they going to receive their ADA?
I could share what I know about what Hayward's doing, just in my communications with the county super there. So they, and it's still in test. So the CDE has not approved or said whether they're going to be funded for this. They've moved to a full independent study. They are, since you cannot offer, you cannot mandate independent study, you have to have a classroom option. So they have certificated staff running learning hubs for an in-person option. But because there's not really allowable, and this is sort of a test case, it's not really allowable to just close a school into independent, like do a mass in, independent study. So they, they have submitted to the state, but the state has not, you know, said yes or no about the ADA. So they may lose that ADA if each, if each student didn't have a classroom option that they could go to. So it's still in a test case.
Okay, thank you. And then does anybody have any updates about the governor's executive order? Anything that looks super hot and promising that the district would move on right away? And if so, timing on, on such a, such a move or measures?
And I don't see anyone here from HR, but I can speak to the fact that as soon as that executive order came out, I met with HR, the HR team and with Ryan as well. And I've asked them to be prepared to come to the board to share an aggressive and immediate a campaign to reach out to community members and parents. I know that I received a few emails from parent groups, PTA groups, who are really excited about that and they want to participate. So we hopped on that right away and we want to be able to report back out to the board what our plan is to bring substitutes and people from the community. I would expect that can come back to the board at our next board meeting.
Board trustees and Dr. Hurst, if I could just add, this is Ryan Phillips, the communications director. We are working on that plan and I would like to share with you something tomorrow. We do have a, a concrete plan as well as some advertisements ready to share with the community and share our website. So we're, we're really looking to move this forward quickly. So we'll, we'll have something tomorrow to share with you.
Okay, thank you. And then the final question is, what thoughts are being given to how kids are going to make up work? I don't see this as going away quickly. And we have some schools that probably have twenty or thirty percent attendance and that will continue. So any thought? Two extensions or anything?
I can speak to that, trustee Reckler. We actually have a memo that's going out in the Friday board memo that will actually outline an extension of grade. So teachers will have an added, I believe, eight days for students to either make up any missing work, turn in any missing assignments, complete finals. And then we're pushing back the deadline, their report cards have to be in students' hands specifically for our middle school and our high school students. So this memo is going out tomorrow. So you'll be able to take a look at that. And so that's really to help all those students who've been out and to give them an extra eight to ten days to get in any missing work, especially for our students who've been out on quarantine because of COVID and for our staff to also give them some additional time to integrate.
Can you also address elementary?
Yes. I'll bring that back to the team. We only discuss really secondary. And I need to go back and look at the report card period, but we can definitely address that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Thank you, trustee Reckler. Now we have moved to trustee Smith Folds.
Thank you. Ms. Superintendent Mackey, have you been to any of the WCCUSD school sites? And if so, which ones?
Over the years, I've been to a number of them, then during this last year. But I have done, I would have to get the list. I've probably been to two dozen maybe.
Okay. And then, this is for anyone, any of the educational leaders on the call. What is your definition of instruction? We say in-person instruction is spending two hours on the yard instruction. Is spending time in the gym, the cafeteria instruction. What is the definition of instruction?
So I would say that's when students are engaged in the content that's tied to the standards.
Thank you for that. Can you please speak to the attendance summary that has happened since January third to today, January the twelfth? Can you speak to the number of students who have been absent? Can you speak to the number of staff who has been absent? And can you speak to the number of teachers who have been absent?
I can get that for you. I have to have someone run the numbers. Tracy is not on here with this right now. Normally she would run these numbers for us real quick. I have to have someone run them for you, but I'll come back to that question for you.
Dr. Hurst, do you have them? Because I would like it publicized because you sent it to me. So do you have that already out?
Yeah, I was pulling it up as you were talking.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's see, we have, we have it by school and then we have a total.
Okay.
Well, the absence. So I can give you from January the third up to now. So overall for the district, we have our enrolled attendants, enrolled attendance is twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-five. On January the third, the number that was present was twenty thousand five hundred and forty-nine. On the fourth, the number enrolled was twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-three. On the fifth, it was twenty thousand four hundred and sixteen. On the sixth, it was seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-five. On the eleventh, it was seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two. And on the twelfth, it was eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. And I don't have it for today.
Thank you so much. And then we were told that if students are not following the masking policy, they would be sent to the district's alternative education program, which at the time was only virtual school. How many students since August have been sent to that school because they have not followed the masking policy?
None.
And I think that was, let me just make sure, President Christian, I don't know if that was four or five. I think that was four. My fifth question is, how do we know that there's no spread at school? That, how are we, how are we quantifying that answer that we can say that there is no spread at school? This is community spread only. Because that's what I believe I heard. How do we know that to be true?
Well, no, I said the majority of it is community spread because we weren't in school when we got a number of these cases that had come into the school. But through contact tracing is how we determine if it is within the school. And we do have some cases that have been linked to the school, but the majority of our cases were through community spread.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. So let me just make sure I understand. So because we were out for Christmas, right? And then we came back January the third and then we started seeing the numbers rise. There's an indication that the majority of the cases are not from school because of that time period. But now we are finding some cases are because of being in school and the contact tracing with the students and the, and the closeness of the students and the mitigation strategies that may or may not be being followed in the contagiousness of COVID. Is that accurate?
And that is student and staff.
Student and staff. Okay, thank you. That's my fifth question. Everything else is comments.
Okay, thank you, trustee Smith. Appreciate that. And then I'm gonna ask the question of how in our older schools, how is our ventilation? Is our ventilation working in our older schools or is it air circulating? So anybody can answer that question?
Sure, I can answer that question. So our ventilation systems are operating both in our older schools and our newer schools. As we've talked before, filtration devices are in our mechanical systems and those filters are being kept and changed.
Okay. And then the reason why I ask that question is that you have some schools don't have windows. Some do, they have them, but they can't open the windows. So, you know, air quality is very important of flow inside of a school or inside of a building. So that's what I wanted to know.
And just to that point, the HEPA filters that the district has purchased, we recognize that and that's one of our mitigation measures. And for those campuses, HEPA filters have been supplied to those schools.
Okay. All right. And the next question is, this is actually going back to the masking. You know, just, you know, some of the visits I've invented so far. But are the masks, students are being showed to wear their mask above? Because I see a lot of students, when I go on some of the campuses, the masks are down. So are they being informed on what to do, how to go about securing ourselves up to date?
Yeah, so we remind our sites almost on a daily basis that the masking strategy is one of the most important strategies. And to wear the mask properly, whether indoor or outdoor. So we are enforcing that. We also have a hotline, a tip line that is an anonymous tip line that people can call when there is a violation of one of our mitigation strategies. So we have gotten calls and when we've gotten calls for those sites, we direct that towards the site leader for correction.
Okay, thank you. And also what comes to my mind, it just, it's the cleaning and the sanitizing. Go back to Mr. Freeze. How is this cleaning and sanitizing going on at our school sites? Because that's very important.
So our focus is, as with, as you heard the numbers from superintendent Hurst tonight, you know, we do have folks that are out ill, but we are, our high priority is taking care of the classrooms. Rooms that we have had exposures, our restrooms and our common areas. But we do have substitutes and we're spreading now. Our staff has been very thin, but we are getting the job done.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have. So now we are moving now to, to item C, comments from the board of education and future agenda items. And we have
President Christian, sorry to interrupt you. Just wanted to clarify, we have to move to comments of the item before we move to comments from the board.
Oh, that's right. Questions, comments. Thank you for the clarification. And we go to the comments and we go with trustee Cole.
This is a closing statement, correct?
Repeat that?
Is this a closing statement?
The, we did the question and if you have any comments?
Okay. So, as a student from Deans High School, a school that is arguably more privileged than Richmond and Kennedy High School that do not have windows for proper ventilation and effective air filters, I'm afraid on campus because of the assumption that everyone I come in contact has COVID.
Trustee Cole, sorry, this isn't, this isn't the closing statement. I know this is your closing statement, but yes, it's not.
Okay, all right. Then I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there we go, the trustee Trahilio.
I don't have any either. Thank you.
Trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much, President Christian. This is a tough issue. And tough is an understatement. It's something that this community has been grappling with for two years now. No matter what we do as an organization, we're not going to be able to please everyone. If we choose A, some people will be mad. If we choose B, some people will be mad. This is not a situation that we could win. It's also a highly politicized situation. It's also a situation that has caused legitimate fear and angst and anxiety in our community. But I truly believe that what we have to do at this time is follow the lead of our superintendent who we have entrusted with the operations of this district. He has a team. That team has shown time and time again in reports to this board that they are working diligently. That they are flexing when they need to flex. And that they are following local, state, and federal guidelines. I choose to continuously emphasize following local, state, and federal guidelines because I want to remind this governance team that no one on this governance team is a medical expert. No one on this governance team is a public health expert. And what we need not do in a situation like this is substitute our personal opinions or uninformed or unqualified personal opinions for the opinions of public health experts. Because when elected officials do that, elected officials get their entire communities into trouble. Elected officials get their communities sick. Elected officials get their communities harmed. And that's not what this board is about. So my comment is really one, this board voted. We set policy, this board voted to open our schools one hundred percent. And that is the policy of this board. And unless there is a vote to change that, that will continue to be the policy of this board regardless of what individual board members may say or ask for. We took official action to do something and only official action can undo that. Within that framework, the superintendent has to operate within the framework of that vote. And that's what he's been doing. So for me, I want to take the politics side of it. I want to take as much as possible the fear out of it. I want us to move forward under the guidance of public health experts. And I want our superintendent to execute that plan. So, Dr. Hurst, thank you to you. And thank you to your team for all of the work that you are doing. I know it's not said enough, but I see you, other people see you. And when I say you, Dr. Hurst, I mean you in the representative capacity. I mean you, your team, folks who are at the central office, folks who are at the sites, folks who are working. Working quite frankly, under very difficult circumstances, working quite frankly, under very trying circumstances. Lastly, we had a conversation in this setting tonight about staffing shortages. I understand that this is a scary time. But I do ask all staff members who are sick, who are really quarantining. I pray for you and I hope that you get well soon. Folks who are not actually sick and just not coming to work, I really do ask you to come. Because your absence is greatly felt by the students, but it's also greatly felt by your colleagues. And that concludes my comments at this time. Thank you very much, President Christian.
Okay, trustee.
Thank you, President Christian. So I appreciate the conversation and everything being done to support our schools. My hope is that we can take the feedback we're getting from the community tonight and we continue to push our system to keep everybody safe. I know there are real systemic constraints that won't be fixed overnight, like our staffing or resources available. But these are things that I would like to see when possible, but with urgency. I would like to see KN ninety-five masks provided to all students. Mandatory weekly testing for students and staff. Temporary increase of subpay to surpass our surrounding districts and attract more people to come here. Increased periods of paying pay. And when employees take extra students in the elementary level through a temporary MOU with our unions. Requests from the county additional contact tracers to support us. Additional rapid tests for staff who need them. Negotiate a remote work MOU and our policy for staff that are in close contact and have to isolate or quarantine so that learning can continue from home in those instances. Using parent volunteers to support the schools. And lastly, I would love to hear next week from staff about the new guidelines and how we're following them and how they're going to be affecting our schools. Those are my asks and hopefully the majority of my colleagues agree and superintendent Hurst, you agree. And we can make some of these things happen as quickly as possible. I personally like option one and two from your presentation. And I don't agree with option three and transferring classroom teachers in the middle of the year. To me, that would be incredibly disruptive to staff and students in an already very stressful time. With that said though, I also want to ask all of us to continue to advocate and hold our system accountable. But also that we lead with empathy, patience, and love. Many of you know I have lost three people very close to me to COVID during this pandemic. My father currently has COVID and my sister, whose birthday is today, happy birthday Anna, was really close to being lost to this horrible sickness. I one hundred percent want to keep our students and staff safe right now. Cases continue to arise and continue to take lives in our communities. Our staff is working incredibly hard day and night, from our classified to our management. We are trying and yes, we will get things wrong and we will also get things right. We are in a new space. Yes, COVID has been with us for a year and a half, but we have not seen the number of cases we are seeing here ever before in our schools. We are all stressed, scared, and feel urgent to save lives, especially our students. We must continue to do so together, not apart. Must continue to work together and bring everybody to the table. I just want to finish by thanking everybody that's working incredibly hard in our schools. A very wise educator mentioned to me the other day that we in education have become healthcare providers this year on top of an already impossible job when we were under-resourced, under-paid, and underappreciated. None of us signed up for what is happening. Teachers did not sign up to be nurses. Classified staff did not sign up to be test providers. Administrators did not sign up to be substitutes. Our superintendent did not sign up to be a healthcare expert. But here we are. I am just incredible, I have an incredible awe at what all of you are doing and I'm truly thankful. I know we will get through this together. And I will leave it there and just say thank you to my colleagues as well. And Dr. Hurst, I hope that you also get direction from the rest of my colleagues on the items that I mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you. That's where we move to trustee Reckler. Next we'll move to trustee Reckler.
Thank you. That was beautiful. I'm, I'm, I did all of that and then I just want to add a couple of things. Um, I am interested, I am interested to know about, uh, our catering attendance and what that does to ADA. I am interested to, uh, get a competitive sub, subpay um, and see if we still have parity with other districts. Uh, we did when we raised pay. I'd like to know if they went up. Um, and we didn't, so I'm interested in that. I, uh, encourage a look at the governor's executive orders as fast as possible. I think that's a great way to shore up operations. And, um, for the, for the county leaders so that you could help us with the state. I just want you to know how scared some of our parents are, um, especially in Richmond. They're just keeping their kids home. Um, they're not letting them come to school. And I think King had enough, had a attendance rate of maybe it was thirty percent yesterday, maybe it's about, maybe it was like twenty percent today. So we have a lot of kids that are not coming to school and they're not coming because they're scared. They come and they get their kids tested and then they take them home and they don't have them come to school because somebody in the class had COVID or a sibling was in the class that had COVID. Um, or you know, or they're not sure if people had COVID or it's, it's really desperate. So kids are not in school right now and you know, I, I just want you guys to know about how serious this is right now for us. Um, and there's gonna have to be a campaign of some sort about how we lay parent fear and how we get them to come back and, um, know that these are safe places that we want kids to be. I am also interested to know if there is any chance that modified quarantine might change and accept a rapid test if anybody knows anything that might be coming in that because I think that might help us. And, um, and one other thing I'm gonna throw out, which might be kind of wild, do we move the February break? Cause that's a week that maybe we need it and it gets moved to a different time, you know, if we're throwing out ideas about something that might work, maybe, I don't know. Okay. That's it for me. Thank you all very much.
Alright, thank you. And next we move to trustee Smithfold.
I just wanna ask one question before I begin my comments. Trustee Reckler, you said that's beautiful and I ditto that. Did you ditto what trustee Gonzalez Hoi was saying, his list? You did?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Perfect. Um, we are a governing body. We set policy, then we cannot advocate our authority. It takes three people to set policy. Trustee Gonzalez, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi just gave a list that trustee Reckler dittoed. I'm now dittoing that too. That's three people that are now giving you direction. That's the majority of the board, giving you the direction to look at trustee Gonzalez Hoi's list. And to now take that and implement that and bring us back that implementation plan. It's not about pleasing everyone. It's about listening to everyone. We set the expectation and the policy and the superintendent implements it. Once again, we now just set a policy. We just set an expectation. The list that trustee Gonzalez Hoi just said was dittoed by trustee Reckler and dittoed by trustee Smithfolds. As only the few people on this governance team, as one of only the few people on this governance team, that's actually a teacher. I will share my qualified and informed knowledge about what happens at schools. The majority of this board voted for to go back a hundred percent in person. The two teachers and the two students did not. I call for the three people who are not credentialed teachers or not students that attend our schools to bring back that policy. And to talk about the realities that are on the ground now. The current realities that we are dealing with at our school sites. When we say thank you to our teachers and our students and our parents, but we vote, but we vote against their value and we vote against their safety, the thank you means nothing. I remember a board member said, where are all the children? I can tell you the answer to that question. They're home. That's where all the children are. They are home. And they deserve to be educated where they are, which is at home. I want to make sure that we talk about testing. There is no way that we should be asking teachers to test students. At elementary school level or middle school level or high school level when they have not been at school for multiple upon multiple days. The data is not gonna come back usable. Because they have not been there to have the instruction. Contact tracing is behind. That's something that we have to discuss. That is a reality on the ground. We have people testing on Thursday and not getting the information to Sunday about knowing that they have been exposed. That is unacceptable. We cannot work with those numbers. Other, I want to know what other districts are doing. Their plan. What are they doing specifically to push this ball down the field? Specifically, what are they doing? What are the other options? It was talked about that all of the options have to be met before we kick in J thirteen. What are those options? List them out. What are those options we have to do to meet that requirement? And then I want to talk about equity enclosures. If we can't name it, we can't hold you accountable to it. If it's three, five, six, what triggers a closure? And that should be across the board. This triggers a closer of a site, of a classroom, of a school, uh, of the district. We have to be able to name that. It cannot be from this site to that site to this site. We were told it was three and that has changed. We were set fifteen and that has changed. We need to have that information. We also need to know what qualifies as shortages. What's the percentage of not having teachers on site that qualifies as having a staffing shortage? We can set that. Because there's, the language is vague. So why don't we tighten it up? Let's tighten it up twenty percent, forty percent, thirty percent of staff not there means that you have a shortage. We don't have a plethora of district leadership in the office that can be sent out to the schools. I heard the number of thirty-five people get sent out. There's areas that have thirty-five teachers out every day, thirty-five staff out every day, areas, whole areas. That means the other areas can't be covered because it's already covered over here. Again, I implore us to talk about the realities on the ground. What is happening right now and what are the solutions right now? We can only do that if we hear from the people that are doing the work. That's it. We can only do that if we hear from the people who are doing the work every day. Again, I implore you to listen as a trustee said to the experts. We are not medical experts. We are not healthcare experts. But there's a couple of us that are educational experts on here. Got a whole credential in it. Did it for years in this district. Those are my comments about the presentation. I reserved the rest of my comments for closing.
Alright, thank you, trustee Smithfold. Appreciate that. And I just wanna ditto the, the same thing, uh, trustee clerk, uh, Gonzalez Hoi, uh, along with my other, um, board members, comrade. And I agree. And so I'm, you know, wanna see things happen. And I just want to say is in the midst of what we're in, the crisis that we're in, we have to work together. And I'm gonna say this, L O, L O V E, love. Love. True love builds. True love cares. True love don't tear down. True love builds up. True love edifies. True love encouraged. True love pushes people. True love brings everybody together. And if we don't have love and we bite and devour one another, we will consume one another. We have to build, we are in the midst of a crisis. COVID is gonna be here. It's all around us. It's everywhere. It's throughout the United States, not the United States, through the world. We just dealing, we dealing, we dealing with some tough times. But we have to work through these tough times. We have to push together and when we push together, that we will achieve together. You know, uh, you know, and I heard everybody. And I'm gonna say this, I've visited a lot of the schools this week and last week. Uh, uh, you know, I went to a lot of the schools. Um, my feet are on the ground. I'm connecting to all the various schools. I was at Hercules yesterday. I was at Kamonsu, Marla the King. Um, I went to Stige today. Uh, I'm trying to get around to the most, a lot of the schools. I was at Crespi. I was at Grant. I'm trying to cover a lot of the schools. I'm trying to get to a lot of schools, much as I can. Uh, and I understand, I, I know it's, it's a major crisis. And I'm very concerned about our kids' education, concerned about staff. Because I'm concerned about all of us because I was sitting in those seats as a classified staff. I was the C S O. I worked campus safety day in and day out at El Cerrito High School and I cared. I cared about our young people. I worked with our teachers. I worked with our population. I worked with a whole lot of people. But I just didn't give up. But we have to have a heart to do what's right. And I'm gonna say love again. If you don't have love, then evil is raining in you. Love takes care of evil. Love surpasses evil. And so what I want to say is, based on the night, we gotta work together. We gotta look at strategies. We gotta look at how do we build a team? How do we orchestrate and construct and build and see things moving in the right direction? And that's what we gotta do. So I'm, you know, I care. And I'm less, I'm gonna just say this. I'm joining the ranks of, to be a teacher. I just got my emergency credentials to go to Oakland to teach. So I'm not staying put. I'm excited about who I am. And I am gonna stand firm in who I am, cause I know who I am. And I'm gonna push forward. And so I thank my, I thank my creator because my creator is giving me the strength. So I'm gonna say to us, we gotta push forward and make the best. In the midst of these crazy times, we are. So alright, going down to the comments, Board of Education, our future agenda items. We are moving to item C. Are there any comments from the board? It start with trustee, uh, Cole.
I'm sorry, is this the closing statement then, now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I apologize for getting it confused, um, before. Um, so as a student from Deans High School, a school that is arguably more privileged than Richmond and Kennedy High School that do not have windows for proper ventilation and effective air filters. I'm afraid on campus because of the assumption that everyone I come in contact has COVID. This is not an exaggeration. At Deans High School, one of my school's vice principal sent out an email today that said, please assume that anybody you come in contact with may be infected with COVID nineteen. Not only am I afraid for my well-being and the people around me, but I'm concerned for the well-being of the staff members who are being overworked and assigned to last-minute period serving in spaces that have not been sanitized. These teachers are being stretched thin, treading on thin ice as they are sacrificing their physical and mental health to serve this district as educators. Not only are they being educators, but they are not being recognized for being babysitters, caretakers, teachers, mentors, and leaders. In an email sent out by Dr. Hurst titled Staffing Shortage and LSA Testing Results on January eleventh, I would like to emphasize the feeling of disappointment in our educators. Where Dr. Hurst wrote, employees coordinating with none, with one another to call in sick together is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. This wording, as described by one of my most hardworking and understanding teachers, who is also an alumni of this district and a father, is dehumanizing. As this specific teacher felt as though Dr. Hurst was speaking to them, the teachers like a herd of sheep. I know that this complaint is not an individual experience, as many other teachers felt as though this was downright disrespectful to be sent to everyone through parent link, including parents, when it could have just been sent to teachers alone. I cannot imagine working for this district and being put on blast while working in these conditions under false pretenses that they're working in safe conditions. Our teachers are being slapped in the face and I would not be surprised if they go job hunting to leave this district, as people have warned in public comment this evening. Being a student from Deans's Law Academy, I will always believe in more power to the people as I continue to learn more about people's rights. I believe it's important us, for us to organize and follow suit with Oakland Unified School District, who is demanding stricter COVID safety protocols through district-wide petition in which Francisco Ortiz and Diana Diaz from the Rye Center have shared with us student trustees a WCCU SD petition demanding demands as well. I would also like to bring light to New York Tech's walkout in which I would like to support Richmond High School students and staff members who are organizing hard to organize a strike to meet their demands, which we have failed to meet. I'm inspired by our community leaders and their ability to be so united despite trying times. To speak on my experience throughout these past weeks, many, if not all students, feels though the district has failed this. While I'm fully vaccinated with a booster, I became sick and had symptoms of a cold, which is why I did not attend school last week. However, I spent all of that week stressing about final exams that are occurring this week, especially when our final grades are coming to a close. I knew that in my mind, if I did not attend school, my grades would plummet. And since these grades hold such a heavy weight on mine, I spent my time worrying about how this would affect me and my reports, which I have to send to college, rather than resting at home and getting better. I know that many students are going through the same experience as well. And for this reason, I'm appalled at how unethical the district has practically forced adolescents to be more concerned about our grades and not our own well-being. With advice from the district, I went to go get tested at Penal High School, in which they were behind and overbooked as they told me and my mom that they were working past closing time. Following my results, I tested negative, but I still feel sick as I continued to cough and have congestion issues. But I still went to school this week. With this in mind, I know that many other students have also been the same. And I wouldn't be surprised if students came in to take final exams to make sure that their assessments were done while still being positive or being sick. I would also like to bring up LSA's lack of transparency. I know a staff member who scheduled to test their global virus pass, who had been exposed to COVID and tested positive previously. But she wanted to take precaution on the test, to take a test on the smoke day, Monday, January tenth. However, at that appointment, she was told that there was no nurse to take her test and had been sent home. With this, I'm certain that many others were also advising, take a test and were turned down eventually. This is unacceptable. Staff members and students are being told to test, but do not have the opportunity or access to take the test. The district requiring that students and staff members must wear KN ninety-five and a surgical or a surgical cloth mask without providing these resources until January seventeenth is also not safe. We do not understand why our schools must be open when we are not given, we are not given the resources that our health services have recommended us. In the email sent by the deputy health officer and superintendent of schools on January twelfth, the statement said that remote learning does not support student mental health, emotional health, and academic well-being the way that in-person learning does. And while this may be true for a majority of students, many students feel as though in-person learning is actually more detrimental for our health. It is a joke that the district believes that in-person learning in these conditions is better for all. It is a joke that the district believes that in-person learning in these conditions is better for all of us. Having our county health officials determine it is safe for us to go to school, when they have not visited our school sites or interviewed staff members and students to understand what it's truly like on campus, is just another slap in the face for us. I, for one, am feeling much more an inch being in person, as I'm distracted by the assumption that everyone around me is sick. I cannot remember a time where I could actually pay attention in class throughout this week, as the sounds of coughing and sneezing echo throughout the hallways and classrooms. I'm certain that Jacqueline, Darian, and Angelica from Richmond High, Martin from Middle College High, Jordan from Hercules High, and fellow student trustee Justin from Penole Valley High, along with a vast majority of other students who are unable to speak tonight, share this concern. I heavily urge the board to offer a hybrid learning option, or to at least close the schools until our Covid cases go down, just like Hayward School District. And while I would like to have faith as an eager student and community later, I'm becoming more and more disheartened every day by our district's ignorance and failures. Right? Go to school, but make sure you have a KN ninety-five mask and surgical mask that are not always accessible. Go to school, but make sure you are tested before coming back to school. Don't come to school if you're sick, but make sure to keep up with all your work and coordinate with your already overwhelmed teachers, where most of them are not there. And lastly, assume everyone on campus is sick, but be prepared to be your best self on campus and focus on your education. Stop being concerned about our funding and start prioritizing our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, trustee Trahilio.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll start. Um, I typically don't really write long closing statements, but today I, I will, cuz I just have a lot to say. Um, this week, this entire school week, I have chosen not to attend school. Um, because, well, I don't wanna get Covid. I mean, it's, you know, I live with people who are fully vaccinated. I even have my booster. But I still don't wanna go to school and have a chance that my family will get Covid. In this entire week, I felt like I'm choosing between my health, the health of my family, versus my education. I shouldn't have to make this decision. This, this is, I, one, I can't make that decision. I mean, I have to go to school legally. I enjoy going to school, but only when I feel safe. Yeah, the thing about, I actually did go to school on Monday, and I left because I didn't feel safe. I, and I, this was a choice I made. My parents didn't tell me to come home. I just genuinely did not feel safe. But before I did leave, I did see one of my teachers with their KN ninety-five mask. And I said, you got your weekly KN ninety-five? They said, well, no, someone actually took mine from the box. This is my own. Something that's truly disgusting is this district pushing finals during this time. Tell me whoever thought this was a good idea. First of all, why hold finals, one, ever? But two, in a time when students and staff are expected to be absent, overwhelmingly, students and staff are expected to be absent. This isn't what's gross about it for me. It's the fact that students who are exposed to Covid or test positive for Covid but don't show symptoms feel obligated to attend school to complete their finals. And I know of students who have felt sick and even tested positive for Covid but did not have symptoms, who did attend school because their parents made them or they didn't want to fail their classes. This district will say, sleep early, eat breakfast to prepare for finals tomorrow, but stay home if you have any symptoms. It just, it doesn't make sense. And I luckily have the privilege to decide, okay, I will not go to school. But I also have to deal with absences, and that's my next point. Is that, well, what about absences? I mean, I guess I'll just sit at home until I get these truancy letters that make me go back to school, where I don't feel safe. Um, my next point is that this variant seems to be everywhere. So even though I haven't been in school, I decided to go out and get something to eat. I'm all getting something to eat. I decided to go into my, uh, job to pick something up that I'd left. And the next day, I was told that an employee who I'd been in contact with while gaining something from my job called in sick, not feeling well. And then I was also told that same day that a friend of mine had been exposed to someone with Covid, who I was just with the day before. It, I mean, this variant is everywhere, right? And I could just imagine going to school, being informed that I've been in contact with somebody who has Covid every second. I mean, I just, I, I just can't believe this. And I, I just, it's just very frustrating. I have a ten-year-old sister who I live with, and she felt sick the past week, and still gained her Covid test, didn't go to school. She got it back, came back negative, went to school. She came home today, and the first three words that came out of her mouth were, three kids in my class tested positive. That's ridiculous. Going to school right now seems like a joke. A friend of mine said, my first period teacher started naming people who need to go home because they were exposed to Covid. There's just, there's just a whole list of people who've been exposed to Covid that need to go home, that I guess your first period teacher might get. I, I don't understand. That's just, and it just feels, it just feels like too much. It feels like this district is just pushing too hard to keep schools open, when logically you shouldn't have them open at all. Teachers are tired, students are tired, people are getting sick. I, I just, it, it's just, it's too much, and this district's just pushing too hard to keep schools open. We shouldn't be, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be open. You know, nobody wants to go back online. However, going back online doesn't seem like a want. It seems like a need. We need to go back. We need to stay home. Personally, I think that we should aim for a hybrid or switching just back to remote learning, at least for the rest of the month. And so we can figure this out, and people choose to get vaccinated, and we figure out how testing is going to work. And I also think that we should push back, if possible, the semester for grades further until February, because I don't think eight days is enough. Because some students have been out for two weeks. That's more than eight, that's fourteen days, or I guess, well, I mean, with, ten days, if you're going to school every day. So, I, I just think we, we need to do something about this. There's too much, there's too many cases. There's too, just too much, there's so, so many reasons to just, too many reasons to close and not enough reasons to stay open. So, this just doesn't, doesn't add up. And I even got reminded during this meeting, and I watched a video earlier, that, uh, Red Lobster, um, reported, or, um, employees at Red Lobsters were surveyed, and it turned out sixty-three percent of employees had gone to work sick or exposed to Covid. And, and they were, because they were encouraged to. And I don't know why this district sounded a bit like Red Lobster, but I just thought it was, it was just something that popped into my head, because this district seems to be forcing students to go to school, even if they've been exposed to Covid. I've been exposed to Covid, but I've chosen not to go to school because I wanna protect others, and I just don't think it's right. Those are all my comments.
All right, thank you. And now we move to trustee clerk, Gazalas Hoyt. No, I'm sorry, trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much, President Christian. I'm gonna spend the majority of my time this evening talking about policy and how a board makes policy and how a board makes policy correctly. This board did not make any policy this evening. Boards make policies by voting. There was not a vote this evening. What happened this evening is one trustee had some suggestions or recommendations, some things that he would like to see, and he mentioned those things. Other board members agreed and said, you know, I would like to, I'm paraphrasing, I would like to see those things too. It's not a policy. There's no vote. What that is, is a recommendation from board members or a suggestion from board members to the superintendent for him to look at things, for him to consider things. And there's a reason that those are recommendations and not policies. Um, and not just the fact that there wasn't a vote tonight, and that there could not have been a vote tonight, because there was nothing on the agenda for action. But I'll give you an example, and before I begin, I wanna make very clear that there's nothing that I heard this evening or that I can recall hearing this evening um, in that list that I had a negative reaction to. So that's not what this is about. This is about us doing our business decently and in order. So I'll give you an example. So take the KN ninety-five mask, right? If this board walked in here and said, what we're going to do is we're gonna tell the superintendent to make sure that we offer these ninety-five masks to kids every day. Superintendent hasn't researched that. The superintendent hasn't costed it out. Superintendent doesn't even know those masks are available to be able to offer to all students every single day. Now, if that had gone on an agenda, for example, for a vote, superintendent or staff could have done research, could have come back and said, hey, actually, there are not enough ninety-five masks to supply for students every single day, or we don't have money to do that. Or he might come back and say, hey, actually, there are enough masks, we can secure them. The bottom line is, we don't know, because the discussion never took place, because it wasn't on the agenda. So, I'm not, again, against our talking against anything that I heard uh, in that list this evening, and I wanna make very clear that I'm not doing that. But what I do want us to do is to do things, um, decently and in order, and if we are creating policies, we do that by agendizing issues, items, and then actually knowing what the proposed or possible policies are going to be, and then coming in and discussing those. And that's, that's not what happened in this setting. There was no, there was no motion, there was no second, there was no discussion, there was no presentation on those things. So, I, I just wanna bring that out. The board sets policy by actually voting, agendizing items, discussing those items, and then voting on them. Um, which is not what happened on this evening. Um, the, the next thing that I wanna point out is, as folks begin to talk about schools and schools being open or whether they should be closed, I do wanna remind folks that there is a policy on this, one that was actually voted on, and it was for schools to be open. If that is to change, there needs to be a vote to change that policy. Um, and it needs to be, um, if that happens, if that vote takes place, it needs to be agendized, it needs to be well-publicized, it needs to be brought back procedurally correctly. Uh, that just placed on the agenda. Um, I'm saying all of these things because these are hot issues, these are tough issues. Um, and when things are hot and when things are tough, um, I truly believe that the rules are there, uh, as bumper rails, as bumper guards. They help keep us safe and they help keep us out of trouble. And whatever the end result is, whatever the vote is at the end, it is what it is. You know, we're, we're big boys and big girls, and, and we, the vote is what it is, and, and we move on. As long as it was done decently and in order, as long as it was done correctly. So, I, I do wanna say, in this evening, in this space, I wanna say thank you to the staff for their presentation. I wanna say thank you to the staff for their work every day. I wanna say thank you to my colleagues for their questions, for their comments, uh, for their recommendations, uh, to the superintendent. Um, I want to reiterate that the superintendent, not us collectively or individually, collectively or individually, is over operations of the district. Um, the superintendent, he is over operations of the district. So unless we are voting on a policy, the things that we are saying are recommendations for his consideration. Um, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Trustee Phillips, uh, we move to trustee Gazalas Hoyt.
Thank you, President Christian. Uh, I was thinking I could make comment, but now, now I have to, which is, I mean, I think that it is important that we differentiate within past policy. I, I totally agree with that. I think that my lists were, were strong recommendations. I think that we all know Dr. Hurst really well at this point. I know Dr. Hurst really well. I think that, I, I, I hope that he obviously wasn't surprised by the list. There are all things that I've talked to him about last week. Uh, but I do think it's important that we bring that here, because I do wanna differentiate that I don't direct the superintendent, me alone, right? And that's why it's important for me to, to hear from my colleagues, right? Tonight, it sounds like, you know, four, actually almost five, right, agreed with the list. Um, and, and, um, you know, those recommendations, but it was important to hear that, because again, if I was to send that list to the superintendent myself, that's not direction, right? That's one board member, um, and, and I don't give direction. Uh, President Christian himself doesn't give direction, right? Trustee Reckler doesn't give direction on her own, right? So it's important that we bring those topics here, and then ask feedback from each other, so that Dr. Hurst hears, like, okay, that's important to my board, right? And he makes it happen if he can. I think that will also be really understanding. He comes back and says, out of the list, we, we, I think we can make five out of the seven happen. These are the reasons why we can't get N ninety-five masks, right? There's a real shortage. They won't get here until March, right? And this is all an example, right? And I think that we'll understand that, right? And, um, but, but I do think that we have to move away from directing staff on our own, right? And we have to do it here together. And I think that's an example of what happened tonight. Um, and, and I think Dr. Hurst, I saw you going like, yes, I under, I, I heard it uh, after, uh, I think President Christian said it, but, um, I think it was an important distinction, and I appreciate, you know, trustee Phillips wanting to clarify, and I agree. Uh, but also, you know, we do direct the superintendent as a body. Um, and I think that sometimes that helps him, because he is studying things, and he doesn't know if we're gonna be in agreement or not. And when we do it together, um, he gets that full agreement, and I think that's what we did tonight with, with these items to move us forward for safer, uh, schools. Um, so I'll leave it there. Now I'm ranting, so I'll pass it back to you, uh, President Christian, and thank you, everybody, for your work.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move to trustee Reckler.
Thank you. So I wanna thank everyone. Um, you know, it is certainly a very challenging time, there's no question, but I want you to know that I'm so proud of this community. And the event that really touched me, or the events that really touched me, is the thousands and thousands of people that came out on Sunday to get testing kits so that they could get schools open and keep their community safe. And then came back out on Monday for a Tuesday opening, thousands and thousands of people that once again came out and got tested to keep their community and their students safe. And that touched me in a way that I really can't even express, but how deeply you care about each other. I also wanna thank the superintendent and his team for their unbelievable work. They worked throughout the entire break. It was an incredible, ginormous lift. They did not get a break. They didn't sleep. He was sick. People on his team were sick. He had staff adages, and they managed to pull off a Herculean effort to get schools open. They worked harder than you can ever imagine, and it looks messy to you, many of you. We heard you that some of the execution wasn't perfect, but your expectation is high, and you keep asking for more, and they keep trying to meet it. I wanna thank all of our educators and our principals and our teachers and our students. I am so touched by your flexibility and your kindness, how you're so able to adapt, and how positive you are and how even-tempered you are. And I know that we're gonna get through this, all right? It's really hard, but we have each other, and we need to rely on each other. And we need to remember and work and act with love and kindness and gratitude and grace. For the foreseeable future, I'm helping out at King, my new community that I love, in whatever way I can, and I wish you all a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. And now we move to trustee Smith-Foel.
Thank you so much. I wanna start my comments by asking a question. Who are we? Are we a board that follows the policies and the bylaws? Sometimes? Who are we? Are we a board that decides that it's the wild, wild west and we do what we want to fit our own agendas? Who are we? If we are a board that follows policy, then our policy needs to be followed, changed, but never ignored all the time. If this is the wild, wild west, then let it be to the good of the students, the teachers, the parents, and their community. If this is the wild, wild west, then let it be to the good of the students, the teachers, the parents and the community. Center our wild, wild west policy around their health, welfare, success and safety. We need to stop reopening the doors to the toxic policy and calling it following the lead. It does nothing but delay the healing and it prolongs the pain. Give, but don't allow yourself to be used. Love, but don't allow your heart to be abused. Trust, but don't be naive. Listen, but don't lose your own voice. I want to see a mighty, a mighty flood of justice. And I want to see an endless river of righteousness. Keep your expectations high. We work for you. We should hit those expectations every single time. Again, this board got voted in by you. You are our boss. You direct us. We direct the superintendent. The superintendent implements the policy. If we want to talk about policy, then what we need to do is agendize everything that was talked about from trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoyt. I will bring a motion on the nineteenth. Make sure it's under action items when you do the agenda setting. I will bring a motion on the nineteenth. I'm sure one of the other board members who then diddled and repeated the dito will give a second to what trustee Gonzalez Hoyt said. And then we will create policy and see the implementation of it. I would like to ask that to be put on the agenda under action. And I hope I have other members and colleagues that would support that. So we can stop sitting by and waiting and we can do our job, which is to make the policy that runs an effective district. Cause that's what we are supposed to do. So let superintendent Hurst, you have direction. Colleagues, it's time to make policy and move this district in a direction of service. Because that's what we are called to do. Serve the students, the teachers, the staff and the community. I am complete.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foe. And, um, as I give my last remarks, close, um, I like to look at it that we are all, this is a working, work in progress. That we have to continue to work and shape. Things didn't get the way it is overnight. But we have to work hard to improve in everything we do. And when we have to use the we is to include inclusive of all of us. And then I have to take a look at myself to make improvement in myself to go to the next level. And, and when I say that is, as addition, we all have to look at, how do we go to the next level? How do we get there? It's going to take the strength. It's going to take the mindset and it's going to take all of us to build together. And then I like to, you know, like even some of the other districts that are surrounding in our, um, in, in the Bay Area. And some are, um, bringing in volunteers. And so we need to look at bringing in volunteers and get, and get them clear where they can be able to come onto the campus. You know, educate them on the, the, the WCCUSD policies and so forth. And, and once we get them acclimated, where they'd be able to come onto the campus and, and, and work in our population. But we definitely need volunteers. We need everybody to come together, you know? I was born and raised and grew up in, in Richmond, California. This is my community. My family came here in the, in the, in the thirties, the forties. So from the south, landed here in this area. And my family been here for generations. And, and I just look at, this is a valuable area. And education is the key. But I know in the midst of COVID, COVID comes, COVID's disrupted everything. Knocked everything out of whack. Got everybody, you know, don't know which way to go. But we, we, we have to keep our, we have to keep our minds, the sanity of our minds. COVID's around us, but we have to protect ourselves. And we have to think of, you know, safeness. That's everywhere we go. It don't even have to be in the schools. It could be anywhere. Wherever you go, you travel, you, you go to restaurants, you do all sorts of things, parties. You do everything. But the thing is, you, you still have to keep your mind, man, I gotta, gotta be safe. So we, we're, we're dealing with a lot. And it is a wear and tear and it is draining. And I want to say is, with all my visits and even I visit with trustee Gonzalez Hoyt, even with trustee Smith Foe, I've been to, you know, a lot of the sites. And I want to say to our teachers, you are doing a wonderful job. I want to encourage our teachers because, because teachers are very important. And our kids, our students, our staff, our classified staff. Everybody is important. Everybody is needed. Every, everything makes everything works. And we have to understand that if we don't pull it together. See, there's a thing called the enemy. The enemy loves chaos in the midst. The unseen enemy. And the unseen floats everywhere. But we have to understand that we have to keep our mind sober and keeping our focus on the right things, what we need to do. Here we are in twenty twenty-two. We have a challenge that we are in a journey. We are in a journey moving. And we have to just appreciate one another. And if we don't appreciate, do you appreciate, you got, you have to appreciate yourself and one another. And we have to understand that it takes people to come together. If we are stronger, one of the things I, I like about the warriors, the warriors, they were together and everybody connects. And it's about teamwork, building relationships. So we have to do that. We have to build, y'all. Here we are in the board. Superintendent, all of us, we got work to do. There's not a dull moment. And like I say, I'm, I'm taking a journey. I'm about to go over to the open area. Got my emergency credential. And I might as well go ahead and get the rest of my credentialing. So my feet are on the ground, y'all. That's all I can say. All right, and then as we close this meeting, now we move to item E, the adjournment.
President Christian, sorry, uh, you skipped through, uh, uh, D.
D. Now we are in item D, the next regular scheduled meeting. But the board is, uh, for the education, it's January the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The meeting will occur on Zoom and in person here at DeJohn Middle School. And the adjournment is, now we are, we move on to, uh, item E, adjourn, adj, adjourning this meeting. And, and everybody have wonderful evening. And thank you for participating in this meeting. Your voice counts. And everybody helps shapes and make this, this, this district a better district. Thank you for coming. The meeting is adjourned.